Hey, the time is 5:32. It is April 26th. This is, this meeting is being recorded for the purposes of producing minutes. This is a special joint meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee and the Southampton Finance Committee. I will call the local school committee to order with four out of five members present. Allison Radon has not joined us yet. Ken?
Yes, thank you, and I will call the meeting to order of the Southampton Finance Committee. All of our members are present and we're meeting to discuss the fiscal year 22 budget.
Okay, so a little bit of housekeeping since this isn't how we traditionally would do this whole process. But in order to try and expedite this, we're holding both the final school committee meeting and the presentation of the finance committee at the same time. To try and do all this in one evening. We have two things on the item, on the agenda for all business tonight. And that is, first is update on the ESSER 2 funds. The last report we had is that the initial funding to the schools was 104,583. DESI has tacked an additional $10,000 for every school district in the Commonwealth to bring us to 114,583. There was discussion about a portion of those funds being made available or potentially being made available to offset the assessment at the community level. And I believe the last update we have is that the Senate budget, which is the most current version of the budget, has removed that as an option, which would put the whole 114 over on the school side. Is there any further update to that, or is that fairly? Okay, so I do, I do want to come back. I mean, we can kind of dive into that right now, or we can come back to that after the budget discussion. Is that, well, I guess. What I want to recognize Bobby Jones, our business administrator, and ask her a question. Hi Bobby. It's, did, in the budget that we're going to go over tonight, are the ESSER funds grants anywhere within those numbers coming in as a receipt?
No.
Okay. And how, well, I know this is the one time thing that we're getting, but do you know, are there restrictions on what we can use the funds for or not, or?
Basically, it has to be 10,000 of it, as you said, for the social emotional piece of it. And then there is still that potential for the towns to use it to offset their increase in their minimum local contribution. And then the remaining money would be spent, obviously, to offset any COVID-related expenses. So you know, it would, it would have to be somewhat earmarked towards COVID.
And does it have to be new expenses related to COVID going forward, or expenses already incurred and not reimbursed?
Yeah, new, new going forward. I think the date and Kate, I think, is here. She could probably, it's April
14th.
I was gonna say 14th. Yeah, April 14th is the start date, so it'd be expenses after that date. And then I believe it can be carried through as far as through 23.
Correct.
Yeah. It can also be used for HVAC, which the previous grants, you know, you weren't able to do it for HVAC. So that is also a possibility.
And that, that's where I was going, was on the Eye Wave machines, but since we've already done the enhancement and upgrade out of basically our school choice account money, we couldn't reimburse from that, but the enhanced maintenance contracts going forward with the filters could, you know, be paid for from that versus coming out of the operational budget. Okay. Any other questions on the ESSER funds? Before moving to the budget? Hearing none? Okay, um, do you want me to share the screen? Bobby, you go through it, or?
Yeah, why don't you share the budget document and I'll go through that. Um, and then we'll just take it, if it's all right with everybody, you know, section by section, and then you can have questions after each section.
One question. Can I confirm that the document that we received this afternoon? The only, there's only one change to the document that we had received before.
At this time, that's correct. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Is that large enough for everybody, or you want me to make it bigger? Bigger?
Yes, please.
Too big.
It's too big.
John, when was this copy of the budget sent to us?
I get, we got it around three o'clock or seven.
Has it been sent to us? I'm not having an easy time finding it on my own here. And I'm not seeing it in the drive either.
I sent it to, John requested me to send it, so I may not have sent it. Um.
No, I'm only asking because it's easier for me to make notes on it when I've got a copy of it to work on. If we could send that out, it would be appreciated. Much obliged. Thank you.
All right. So for the first page, the most part of the first page is central office costs. And it is primarily only contractual increases. One thing I did put in, if under the description there where it says like school committee, recording secretary, contracts, et cetera. If you go to wherever there is a salary line, you'll see the FTEs that that number represents. So for instance, superintendent salary FTE 1.0. Your portion of the 1.0. So the only increase, there is an increase in line 16, which is the admin clerical salary. And that is, we have had for, I think it's three years running, our auditors have said that we needed more staffing to help the business office in order to get reports out timely. So there is a addition of a administrative assistant, and that would be to serve the superintendent as well as to aid in taking some of the duties away from the higher paid, you know, the payroll clerks and the accounts payable, et cetera, so that they can lighten their load and then be able to assist me in a, you know, higher fashion. And it would also assist the, you know, the superintendent a little more dedicated than what we currently have. And then you'll see under the business administrator, there's a decrease, and that is in part that we used to have a $25,000 consultant fee that we included so that I could consult with others outside. And so we decreased that and in adding the administrative assistant. Sped secretary, there's also a decrease that is a newer person who came in at a lower rate. And then the new part is on line 41 and 42, that's central office insurance benefits and contractual travel. And that is new this year as part of the work that we're doing towards the cost sharing agreement. So this was something that everybody agreed to start off with for FY22, but there will be more changes coming. So there's a total increase to that section of 81,266, of which 55,547 is just the change in how we're paying for the insurance benefits and contractual travel.
So Bobby, go ahead, Austin.
I was just gonna comment, I, I was under the impression that even though that's a $55,000 increase, that for the town of Southampton, our bill is actually going down because of that move.
Essentially, yes. So what you're paying in Hampshire regional portion is going down.
58,000.
So it is, yes.
So just so people who weren't a part of that discussion don't freak out at the 55,000 number, it is actually saving our town money to do that.
Yeah, the high school assessment's gone down about 58,000. So to the town of Southampton, it's a net increase of about 3,000. Or net reduction in assessments by 3,000.
And if, if just for the purposes of the new committee member, maybe some of the new committee members on the school side, and I don't know if the finance committee is 100% up to speed on how this is done, but could we spend a moment to talk about, and I heard about if you want, the allocation of central office and how that calculation's done under the 1966 agreement?
Sure. So typically, how the central office class have been allocated, as John said, since the original agreement, has been based on the prior year's October 1 counts. So it gets assessed out rather than where your normal assessments are assessed out to each town. The central office has to be assessed out to each school. So it's based on those counts, and then the difference is, is you include the vocational in the counts for the central office, which you don't in the regular assessments to the towns. And then, so that's how that number is derived at each year.
And the, the for central office, it's based on the October 1st, the most current October 1st number there is at the Hampshire Regional, it's over rolling five to smooth it out.
Correct.
Right, so. Right, so in this case, central office right now for Southampton on line 22 is, we're paid, we're responsible for 33.7% of that budget. And then for Southampton up at the high school level, any dollar, this is what Austin was talking about, any dollar that gets assigned to the Hampshire Regional budget, Southampton pays 56.3 cents a dollar. But if it's truly a central office expense, then Southampton only pays 33.7 cents of the dollar. So by pulling all the benefits out of Hampshire Regional and saying this is really a central office thing, it's what we believe to be a more fair and equitable allocation. And I can, I can send that separately to the finance committee in this Excel book.
Please.
I'll go back to the budget. Any other questions on the central office? Now, the other thing is, the central office budget's already been approved by all the other communities, I believe. So it would be extremely difficult for us to change anything in this section, if not impossible.
No other questions? All right, so the next section at the, the very last line on this page starts what is called the instructional section, and these, these are actually sections that I use to report to DESI. So in the instruction section, we have sorry.
Somebody wants to go out.
Her father just came home, so she's like, you know, crying. So anyways, so for this section, we have principal, which is, you know, contractual increase. And then if you go to the next page, um, you will see, I forget, I put double sided here, you'll see the administrative assistant is 1.5, and that's contractual increases. Sped secretary Norris is another halftime position. Those are contractual increases. And then the office supply line, which increased by 5,700, is really just out reallocated from a supply line further down, which you'll see. Substitutes is an, oops, sorry, skipped over teachers. So teachers are one of the largest increases. Regular teachers are 196,518, and sped teacher is 159,320. And that is a result of the contractual increases for, in part contractual increases. And the fact that we had not known when we budgeted for FY21, what those were going to be. So this is actually essentially a two-year effect. Um, so the additional thing in regular teacher salary is there is a .5 math interventionist that was added. And in the sped teacher salary, and you're going to see this later on a document we're going to share. The sped teacher salaries, there is inclusion of a additional special ed teacher. And an increase for the SLP from .8 to .9. And then a additional .5 adjustment counselor. And then an increase of the BCBA from a .5 to a 1.0. So those are also included, and as I said, you'll see that in another document when we go over, you know, the options for this budget. And then regular, the teachers aides, those are simply contractual increases, and there's a shift between every year between regular paraprofessional and sped paraprofessional, but the overall increase is really only 8,456 to that line. Library contractual, the professional development, that's 47,267 is actually something that was voted down by the union. So that will be coming out. And again, you'll see that on another document. And then here's where I was talking about earlier is on line 87, classroom and library supplies, you'll see that decrease. That was reallocated between sped class supplies and office supplies. And then if you go to the next page, you'll see tech assistant. So currently, we have a .5 custodian, and he serves as a .5 IT person. So it was asked to increase that position to a 1.0. And additionally, I moved it into its own line where it should have been all these years, and it hasn't been. It's always been actually paid for out of the custodial line. And at least that .5 should have been paid out of a separate tech assistant line. So that's what that 48,339 is. And then the 13,891 and the 3,0365 is in order to maintain our one-to-one program that really got started with the event of COVID. So that's those increases. Then the rest of the instruction section, which is adjustment counselor insight, those are just actual contractual increases, which includes a percentage and the steps. So that's an increase for the instruction section of 504,385.
I mean, I have one question. What line item would the vice principal be? Would the funds be in? Because I see principal and I see the union spots.
That's actually down under the school choice. The assistant principal has always been paid, and I'm not sure why, but since I've done this, the, the assistant principal's always been paid from school choice funds directly. So that's why you don't see it up in the general fund.
Okay. Other, other questions on this section at this time? So I would say as we go through this, I'm envisioning we're going to go section by section all the way down to the bottom. Then administration has some suggestions for us to consider, and then we may start bouncing around in the document.
Can I, can I ask, what would the amounts of the increases that's called for by the contracts?
It's a 2% COLA, and then the steps vary between them. And I, I actually don't have that broken out, but I can, I can get it to you if you'd like to see it in that fashion. But either way, it's contractual.
Right, and because of the time, part of this is because we're in the second year now. So the second year is the full 2%. The first year happened after the budget was already placed or done, and the placeholder in the budget, by my rough math, was 3.3. But there was a reset to the scale. And again, again, I can, I can share it. I can send you everything I sent to Town Hall on that, and from what I just heard from Bobby is, anything that was above that 3.3 is getting identified in this year.
So, so we already have that?
It would have got filed a year ago, because we're in the second year of that, of the teacher's contract.
No, I mean, you said you sent that information to Town Hall. Does that mean?
I, yeah, I would have sent the workbooks and the contract back when we ratified the contract.
Okay.
But I, I did not send a workup as to the actual cost that it was, and I certainly can't.
Okay, if, if you could, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
May I ask a clarifying question, please? This is Rachel from the finance committee.
Sure.
You indicated with the teacher salaries and the special needs salaries that that was over that two-year plan. Is it safe to say that that really should, that would amount to about $175,000 per year, year over year, and then next year would be 175, or am I not understanding that correctly?
I'm not sure I understand your question in full, but so this year, basically, when I budgeted for FY21, the contract was not settled, so I didn't estimate. And then that estimate, because the salary schedule was completely revamped, came in at under, so it came in, I mean, came in over what I had budgeted. So we have to make that up in our FY21 budget in other lines. But basically, what John had tried to do when he redid this, or with the committee, whoever did this, this schedule, was to keep it sort of within the 2%, which it sort of did with the lesser increase. I think it was a .75 the first year.
For, for the senior employees, yes.
Let's see, yeah. So, but so this second year, which again is not reflected in this current year, there are every person is getting not only their 2% COLA, but they're getting a step raise the way that salary schedule was revamped. So when you go, if you're talking FY23, you'll, you will see, I believe, you know, slight, you know, less of a, less of an increase because you will have already accounted for that. So then coming into, but it still will be greater than, you know, typical, I'm thinking, because again, most everybody's going to get a step. Where in FY20, there was a lot of teachers that were stepped out, so they only got that 2% COLA, or whatever COLA that was negotiated. Did that, did that help?
Yes, that does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bobby, is there, is there any way you can characterize what a step raise would equate to? Are they, are they pretty much the same for?
No. I think when, when the cut, and again, in the spreadsheet, you'll see the historical. Could, traditionally, it started off where you had the COLA plus your step, and your step was somewhere between 2 and 4% as you came in as a base or a step one, and then you'd move up to a step eight. But after, at year nine, the steps didn't increase, with the whole system adjusted up by 2% to 3% every year to where some of the steps are, were an 8 to 10% increase as people got to them. And by doing what we did, we we were heading down a road where there was this massive number of employees that were about to hit that 10% increase now. And there were concessions made on both sides to spread that, spread that point out over time.
So forgive my naivete here, but so are we saying that anything that's in these salary lines, it's all within contracts?
There, there are only two employees at North School that do not have union contracts.
Okay, so it's pretty much signed, sealed, and delivered?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the salary goes, the, the, and I think what you'll see later is what's on the table reductions in staff.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on this section?
I do have a question.
Yes, Mary.
Hi, Mary Siriak from the finance committee. It's in regards to the substitute line. I see that there's an increase of $5,000, and I'm just wondering, you know, what's different from this year to next year?
The school committee actually voted to approve an increase to the substitute rate in order to enhance folks to come sub for our schools where they were going out to neighboring schools rather than coming to our schools, because we were paying a much lower rate than other neighboring towns.
And, and by our schools, it's within the district. It's the other four members of our team.
Well, and we were so low that we were competing with the base salaries at local food establishments, because one of the candidates said, I can get paid more working food service than teaching children, which we, maybe an adjustment would be warranted.
And just, does, that particular line of, well, schools are one area where we only have to pay federal minimum wage, do not pay the state minimum wage. And our substitute rates were below the state minimum wage.
Okay, so moving on to the other school services, which is really just our nursing staff and the food service. That will be just contractual increases again. We didn't have an increase for our food service folks, so what we have to do is we have to pay for monitors for food service. We can't pay for the monitors out of the revolving fund, the monies that are taken in from school lunch fees. So we have to put that amount in our budget, and we had a couple people leave and then some new people come on. So we had enough money within that particular line. And then for the nurses, there was a contractual increase. And then the physician had an increase, and that's a result of a new district-wide contract. Um, and it, it benefited, it will benefit everybody because it's one physician for all schools. But the cost came in a little higher than what Norris had been paying, but they were going to have to go out anyway because their physician resigned. So that's what that increases. And then the health other is an increase between, we have what's called a SNAP. It's a nursing software that we pay each year. And then you pay it according to yours, actually, this one is paid according to number of nurses. So you have two nurses, so you, they have like 10 licenses essentially, and so each school pays what they have for licenses. And so that had increased over the past couple of years, so I increased that line, and that's all we had for the other school services. And then if there's no questions, we'll move on to maintenance. And then if there's no questions, we'll move on to maintenance. And here you're gonna see um custodial salary, there's a decrease. Um, and I have a four point oh FTE, it's actually three point five. And then there is a decrease and that decrease is because if you remember earlier, um, on that um tech assistant. I moved that half-time person and we increased it to full-time, but I moved it from this line to that line. So that's why you're gonna see the decrease there. And then on to page four, um, the only increase in the utilities is nine thousand six hundred ninety. Um, and that is for. Um. The internet. So when we went to um remote learning, we needed to increase our bandwidth. Um, so we did, we worked, our IT director worked with the company and got the bandwidth increased. This is an area where we probably could reduce. Um, and again, you'll see that in, in the accompanying document. Um, we could reduce and go back to the old bandwidth. I'm not suggesting that necessarily, but I'm saying that that is a possibility. Um, so that's the only thing, so it ultimately ends up for maintenance of a reduction of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, which is really. Um, a result of the move to the IT, to the tech assistant. So the increase is actually the nine thousand six ninety.
So I know that when we looked at this, Bobby, we, we asked to get clarification that much of the line really. And um, I don't think the whole committee heard. I was at a different meeting where Tom speak to that. The reason why is because of all blowers in that going twenty-four seven for COVID, there wasn't. That forty thousand dollar savings that we just paid.
For the um electric?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we didn't uh, we didn't, I don't think we're gonna see too much in savings this year. Um, as you said, we had done this before, but. All year.
Any other questions on this section?
Oh, can I just ask on that, so the custodians, you, you said that's three and a half? FTS?
Three point five FTS, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, so the next session is our tuitions and special education. Um, this is an area with very little area or room for change. Um, we have programs in district, which is our summer school program. Um, this year, I think we really would have had to increase that, but we were able to get a grant. Um, which is gonna assist, so we, we did not need to increase that line. Um, it is also a line that we often, at the end of the year, are able to use a grant to pay. Um, for that cost. That's something we can use a grant for if there's monies left over. Uh, but it's not guaranteed, so um I kept that line the same. And then the programs added districts is for students that actually go out of district. So they go to um private placements, um because we can no longer um support their needs. Or um. You know, services that they need. And I know that our sped director and the principal um and all the teachers and everything at the school do everything they can to keep anybody from going out. But sometimes it's just inevitable. Um, so that's what that represents, and unfortunately, it fluctuates every year. I mean, one or two students going out can make a huge change for you.
So, so that's, that's an item you really don't have any control over.
Correct. Correct, and um I actually heard today that um there is the possibility. And I, you know, I'm sure they'll speak more to this later on, but there is a possibility of a couple of other students that could be on the verge. Um, and should that happen, once our budget's set, then we have to find that within the budget that we have. But that would be something we'd be responsible for. If we had two more kiddos go out. We didn't budget for them, we'd have to find the monies somewhere, somehow.
Who, who makes the determination?
Um, the special ed department, along with, they have teams and I can let Nancy um pilot clash if she wants, speak to that a little more. If she will.
Hi, so we have, um, it's all um based on an IEP team meeting. And we try within the school to exhaust all our resources and supports and interventions. But if it gets to a point where a student isn't able to make progress in school. And they need a higher level of support that we can't provide. We sometimes have to send them out to a smaller, more specialized program.
And I'll just add to that, Ken, my name is Eliza Pluto. We have not met. I'm the prince of Let Norris.
Hi, Eliza.
Hi, um, we had developed a program a couple of years ago called our language-based classroom. And this was, we were so grateful to have that uh put into our budget that year or two years ago, where we are now able to um. As best as we can keep kids from going out due to language-based disabilities, uh like a school like White Oak. Where it might cost eighty thousand dollars a year to educate the child. So we have prevented some students from going out of district based on um with an IEP based on readings, needs like dyslexia or things like that. However, um, we might have students now who have social emotional disabilities. Um, or they are um cognitively, not cognitively low, but they are um. You know, they have trauma and, and based sort of emotional disabilities that we don't have a therapeutic setting here at Norris in order to meet their needs. So although, you know, I know that, we could talk about this after, but. Sometimes what we need to do is differentiate our support at school. So although I may not be asking for classroom teachers because our, our enrollment is not high or going higher, it's actually lower. The needs of the students that we are getting in early as preschool are, are greater and they're more, and they're different. So um in order to prevent students from going out of district like these, we have to differentiate the support that we're able to give.
Thanks, Eliza. Thank you, Nancy.
Is there, is there a possibility to break that number down between the two programs? One is, what I heard, one was summer school. Or, or, and by summer school, I, I think what that is, is the children that are eligible for a year-round schooling or extended school year.
Right.
So there's a number of participants there, and then there's a number associated with the out-of-district placement.
Right, so that is two separate lines in the budget. So if you look at line one seventy, that's the programs in district, which is the summer programming.
Okay.
Thousand. And then um the next line, the one seventy-three is the out-of-district private schools.
Alright, so the, the, the one ninety, well, the two sixty-one, that's there, which is a hundred and ninety-three percent, a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar increase from the previous year.
Yep.
Sixty-seven thousand. Represents how, how many students?
Um, well, I hate, I hate, I, I don't like identifying anyway, but.
Well, no, not, not, I guess, it means one thing to me because I, here's what I'm thinking. I see sixty-seven thousand for the previous year, and that was before we went into COVID, COVID. So then we go into COVID and, and we, and we skyrocket higher than we have been. You know, the previous year, we, before the six, we only did a hundred and forty. So we're at an all-time high, at least on the numbers that I have. So I, I guess it's, it's one thing if that's only, you know, two or three children. I, I get it, it's probably, but if, if we're talking forty children related to COVID and we think that this is a one-time, I don't know.
It's, it's four.
Okay.
Four students.
Four students represents two sixty, two sixty-one?
Correct.
And it's not equally split, depending on where they're going or what their needs are.
Correct, there's four different schools, each one's going to um four different schools. And years ago, what you would see is, you would see as, as Eliza was speaking to, before the program was in place, you'd have. You know, maybe four or five kids going to White Oak. And now we have one, you know, so it's. You know, it's def, that number's definitely been better. But these are all different schools and they range from the highest is eighty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three. Um, plus, oh no, and summer's included in that one. Another school is fifty thousand five hundred and fifty with an additional almost seven thousand dollars for summer programming. And then another um program is sixty-three thousand four seventy-one with an additional eighty-two hundred for summer programming. And then another school is fifty-four five eighty-two. So you can see it ranges all over the place, depending on the placement of the school. Um.
These are, these are higher than Ivy League colleges.
Yeah. Well, I know, my previous business administrator, she used to always say, it'd be cheaper if we bought them a house in another district. Which isn't nice to say, but I mean, just to equate it, but.
Right.
And Bobby, do you include the out-of-district transportation?
Separate line.
It is, okay, because that's also draw, jaw dropping.
Yeah.
Nick, Nancy, I'm, I'm, again, for everybody else, so that everyone's familiar with this. Um. Tell me if I get this wrong, and then you can correct me. But once a child, once a child and their parent or guardians have agreed to the odd district placement. They enter into a legally binding document with the district that covers either a year or a longer period, whatever. So even, even if we wanted to make a change here, there's already a legal document between all lawyers that set this up for next year.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in every case, John, it's driven by the, the IEP. And the placement page. So um, what you're referring to is a settlement agreement, which is a, a separate um agreement. That's made in different situations.
Okay, so. I'm guessing the school committee does not have the authority to eliminate funding that is required by.
No.
Agreement, right, so.
Right, it's, yeah, it's mandated. By law, yeah.
Yeah.
And Nancy, could you speak to the fact that it's, the, these may not have anything to do with COVID at all, right? The nature of the needs of these children?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, so. Tip, you know, what we've done um with the language-based program, we, we had children who were. In third or fourth grade and were several years below grade level in reading. And that's really an emergency situation when it gets to that point, so. Um, we, we recognized that we weren't addressing kids' needs early enough to keep them at Norris and keep them making progress. So those kids ended up going out to White Oak. It was totally unrelated to COVID. It was pre-COVID, actually. Um, and what we're seeing now is we're seeing kids with social emotional needs. That we're thinking that we need to um shore up our supports that we have in the school. So that we don't have to send these kids to a therapeutic day placement. There's a lot that the school can do to keep kids in district.
I think one of my questions relates to that. So if the all-in cost of, you know, with transportation for a year of school is seventy thousand-ish. Um, we could do a one-to-one for cheaper, couldn't we, technically?
What do you mean?
Level, like a master-level sped teacher might be cheaper than that. On a one-to-one basis.
Well.
Well, it, it wouldn't need to be one-to-one necessarily, but we could have um. You know, they could, they could serve the needs of, of several kids, yeah. And keep kids in their community school with their peers, which is really important, too.
But even worst-case scenario, we might be able to do one-to-one cheaper than sending them to a, I mean, some of them. You know, the kids need the specialty school, and I get that totally. Um, but in some cases where kids are on the edge. Um, you know, that's, that's part of what. You know, since the number is so high, I thought it was more, I thought this number represented more kids. It was more in like the twenty thousand and then, you know. There's, we probably can't make the math work on that, but for eighty or seventy, we can make the numbers work.
Right, and it, it, you know, it ends up if we're proactive in addressing kids' needs, we can um. You know, it, it's a, an investment upfront that can save money over time. So that, but if we, you know, if we don't have those resources, we're not, we're not able to respond effectively. And then the situation escalates and gets worse as it did with some of the children that ended up at White Oak.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think we might be jumping earlier, but I think that's part of Eliza's master plan with the additions in this budget. Maybe that's later in the presentation, but.
Yeah. And just, just so you know that um for FY twenty-one, we had some kiddos come in that were unbudgeted or partially unbudgeted. And so we are overspent at this particular time of like twenty thousand dollars in that. Um, line that we'll have to, as I was speaking to earlier, we'll have to find out swear. Twenty-eight thousand, actually.
Okay. Yes. Next section.
Next, so that brings us to our, the end of the general fund. Um, which you'll see is a five million, five eighty-five oh fifty-two, or an increase of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. And then, um, if you go to page five, that will go into some of our other budget items. So page five, the transportation, um, you're gonna see what Nancy was alluding to before is another jaw dropper. Um, regular transportation is just a slight contractual increase um per the contract. And then sped transportation contract is a hundred and fifty-two, one twenty-five. Um, that is. All based on. Um. Vanpool providing the transportation. There is um a chance that a parent may transport. Um, but we don't know that for sure. And then additionally, there's a chance that there is room on Hampshire's vans who will do it at a much. Lower price, but we don't know that as of yet either. So um, this is what I'm hoping is the worst-case scenario um for that line.
And Bobby, that, that, is that greater than the four student, the four students that are out of placement? So, some of those van pools might actually be on the Norris. No.
No. It's all just out of district.
So that's just, that's just the four children?
Correct.
At a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to transport them.
In addition, yeah, in addition to the tuition, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Alright, so that comes out to forty-two thousand dollars per child. Um. Parents are aware, right, that, that we can, we can pay them the prevailing violence rate if they'd like to transport their own children, right?
Uh, what was that, John? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is it a, a parent could opt in to transport their own child? And we, and there's some sort of reimbursement that we would give them, whether it's mileage or not.
Yeah, and I.
Less than forty-eight thousand. But that's a parent's choice.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I make them aware of that. Um, it's hard, you know, because these days, most parents, both parents are working, so um it doesn't always work out. But sometimes it does.
You know, I know there's a lot of certification that goes along with this and all that, but it would almost be worthwhile, just depending on the. Depending on the roots and where, where these four schools are going. Put our old bus on with our own trained certified driver and terror.
Mm hmm. Definitely something that you should think about. Um, I know it's worked. To save Hampshire tons of money. It's also saved, um, Norris. Quite a bit over the last couple of years as they've been able to transport some of the um Norris kiddos, so. There has been um savings realized by surround, by our other district schools as well as within the Hampshire Regional School itself. By having the vans, but. Um. It certainly, you know, it certainly is something to think about.
Okay. Now, and and within this section here, now we're outside of. The general fund, right, are these, these are just separate, the town. Budgets and, and sets the budgets.
Correct. Yep, and that's typical. I don't know how long ago, but they moved the transportation. Section out of the operating budget a long time ago because they were getting. Um, too close to their net school spending. Um, by including that, and so they took it out so that they realized the, the true net school spending amounts.
There's a decrease in circuit breakers.
Yeah, there is, and um I have to go back and look at that, too, um. To see if. I realized everything that we had or will be getting, so I can review that again just to see. Um, but when I did review it at the time of doing this budget, that's what I saw we would have available. Um.
Is that extra mon- is that extra money from the state to help subsidize us?
Correct, yes. Yeah. So that is, that's money that comes back to us based on, um, so you have a, a student class, so let's take the eighty three thousand seven hundred and forty three dollar. Um, tuition, then you have a foundation you have to meet, which is like forty five, forty eight thousand right now. Um, and then anything above that forty eight thousand. Um, in this case would be thirty something. You would then get reimbursed at a particular percentage to pace. It's, it's based on appropriations at the state level, so. Um, you would get, it's typically been around like a seventy two percent um reimbursement of that amount over the foundation. Um, and then we often do get um what's called extraordinary circuit breaker. Um, which comes to us um. At the very end of the year, so we don't always know that we're gonna get it. Um, and again, that's based on what the state has for monies and um the appropriations, but. What if you spend more than a hundred and twenty five percent, so twenty five percent over your last year. Um, for special ed class, you get reimbursed um at a hundred percent of the difference. Um, and then you, but you have to spend it in that current year. So you'd have to spend it so in, in the, so if we got it now, we'd get it in June, May or June. But we'd have to spend it in the fiscal twenty one. Which could help offset that twenty thousand or twenty eight thousand that were over in the budget. For twenty one.
School choice section.
Yeah, so school choice section, um, I just left the same. We have still, you know, in that pattern of spending more. Um, than we're taking in, so we're um. You know, we're holding our own and we were starting to build up that balance um a little bit. Um, so I just kept it at the same. It's actually a little less. Um, we could toy with that, but again, um. You know. Right now, I'm looking, trying to pull that piece of paper for myself. So I'm looking at, we have. A balance coming in of. Three hundred and four to start this year, almost three hundred and five, and I think we're taking in about three hundred and five, so. Then we have budgeted expenses of three twenty four five. So that's gonna give us an ending balance of about two eighty five, so you can see that balance is going down. Um, and then based on the enrollment that we have currently. Um, we anticipate revenue of about two hundred and eighty three. That would give us um after the expenses that we're budgeting three twenty four, a balance of two forty four. So you can see we're starting to drop that balance, which is a goal that we've been working on for, you know, at least three or four years. Um, to try to get us back up where we can actually start applying a decent amount. Um, but it's gonna, it's gonna take years to do that, several years. Um, and then depending on what happens with the budget, it may not work out so much because we may not be able to take in school choice if we have. Um, class sizes that are too large.
So the um. Those two line items have the numbers that administration, instructional, those are all wage related line items, correct?
Correct, yes, yep.
Do we under instructional, do we know how many positions those are?
Um, well, it's split out, so I just split it up because I don't want to pay anyone. I usually don't want to pay anyone's salary.
Yeah.
So I split it out amongst various. I mean, I could look to see how many I did, but. I probably split it out between. Eight to ten different places.
Is it as a portion of their full salary?
Correct.
Right. Is it the same thing on administration? Or is that?
Right, that's completely paid from school choice, yeah, administration. That's a full salary.
So the, so in the incoming tuition, is that fifty seven hundred? Or fifty one hundred?
What are you saying? I'm sorry.
Um, the revenue coming to that account per child. Fifty seven hundred?
Oh, it's five thousand.
Five thousand.
And then any um special ed incremental costs.
So for. So any, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say for finance, uh, if I comes clarification. We have an X number of seats that we open up every year for students outside of the district to come in. As those seats are filled, the sending district. Pays us five thousand dollars per child per year to come in. And then that money goes to this, to this section here. If, if you think of it, this isn't the right term for the school, but it, it's the school reserve account really, or the, or the stabilization fund. It's, the money goes in there. Because in theory, if you're adding one or two more children to a classroom, you're not really adding. A full time teacher to it. You're just filling out that classroom. And then when we spoke earlier about getting hit with things after the budget passes. The school doesn't have any option or re- or course of action to go back to the town to ask for additional money. After the tax rates been set, so this is where that pot of money comes from. Or it's what this money is used for, but. You'll see the, the number she just went down to, if everything works out this way, we'll be left with just over two hundred thousand at the end of the year, give or take.
And, and just to. I, I always say this because it's so, we don't get the rosters for the current year until. About December, maybe, maybe a little before that, and we don't get the final roster. And for that current year that we're in until June of that year. Um, so it's really hard to predict sometimes, and there can be some, some big changes, whether it's pro or con. Um, but just so you know that, too, I kind of, I kind of do this with the crystal ball. Um. And I hope it works every time.
Um, just out of curiosity, how? How many out of district students do we have now?
How many school of choice students?
Yeah, sorry.
I think it's sixty seven or sixty nine, according to our last enrollment. I'd have to look it up.
I, I can look that up, too, if you wanna give me a minute.
And that's spread over the seven grades?
Yes.
We don't, we don't do school choice for pre-k.
Correct. And then we lose some of those school choice kiddos every year when the sixth graders move on. So normally we tried to replace. The ones that we lost, so we had nine or twelve sixth graders of the whole sixth grade class that were school of choice. I try to take in that same amount. But this year will be uh more difficult to do that. This time we're only taking school of choice siblings in kindergarten. Of students who are already school of choice students here who have incoming kindergarteners.
Good, so. So in essence, then we have, let's say, just for rounding. Seventy students that are paying five thousand dollars each. Each year that they are here, and then. We use that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To reduce. Salaries and other expenses. So it's. It's broken out throughout the budget.
Correct, yeah. So if, if we didn't have that school choice money. That um two hundred and forty one thousand you see in that instructional line would be actually added into. The um operating budget, teacher salary or sped teacher salary or nurses line or wherever it may fall.
Yep. Are there, are there any? Additional expenses that go along with that? What if somebody, this? I can't imagine that somebody can get. A ride on a bus to get here. Do we pay for any kind of transportation for those? Out of district people? They make their own arrangement to get to school?
We, we do fit the um. The school choice kiddos on the bus if we have room.
Right.
Um, and we were charging them a, a small fee. Um, to ride that bus. Uh, but it, it doesn't cost us anything additional, but they can only get on if they can get to a stop that we currently stop at, and if there's room on a bus. So we don't hire an extra bus to transport them, no, so we don't pay any. Any transportation in that regards, unless it's on an IEP and then it's reimbursed under the sped incremental charges.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now, according to the, to the sheet that we have. Um, we have fifty two school choice kiddos that we're um taking in.
Fifty two.
And then there are, that's at five thousand, and then there's the, um, like I said, the sped incremental charges. Um. Let me just see. In this case. Looks like. Looks like. Um, that's about forty, forty five thousand four hundred and two dollars additional to the five thousand dollar rate.
And that's for what now?
That's for the special, any special ed class that they might get per their IEP, so they may have a tutor or they may have. Um, you know, speech services or OT services or anything like that.
Also, once, once we accept the child is on the student, school choice, we accept them for the whole term. Like, we can't, they can't come in like kindergarten, first grade and all of a sudden they're identified as special ed and we send them back to the district. We all of them. Until they voluntarily decide transition.
Right. Actually, they changed that, I believe, so it's, it's through your, each school, so it's through sixth grade. Technically, I believe the high school could now not take them. I don't think that would ever be the case, but you never know. But they could essentially not take them, but I think they, they took a vote, if I recall. Um, that they wouldn't turn anyone away if they had the space. And I think they got letters to. To address that, yeah.
Bobby, this is Rachel from the finance committee again. Quick question on the school choice students. If they were ever uh deemed to need. Additional services that would, that. Norris or they couldn't receive at Norris and they would have to go outside. Would those costs be allocated back to the sending district or would we have to absorb those?
We, we wouldn't absorb them. We, they would, we would pay for that, but they would again be part of that um sped incremental charge. They would actually reimburse us for that. So we, the sending district essentially pays for all the costs.
Okay.
For the special ed, be it in or out.
Okay, thank you.
Mm hmm, you're welcome.
Under the uh, the grant section, these are, these are revenues coming in?
Yeah, so, yeah, so additionally, um, just like the school choice. Um, we get thirty thousand dollars from the two forty grant that we use to pay for um two pair of professionals fifteen thousand each. Um, so that's, you know, a good part of their salary, but. Um, it is additional monies that if we didn't have those, would again, you'd see them in your operating budget and that would be an increase to that. And then we also get the title one money, which is earmarked at twenty three thousand. Um, it changes each year, give or take a little, so if um. There's monies left over, they can use it, they, the principal, um, and they would work with Kate and use it for something. Um, supplies or whatever else wasn't earmarked towards salary. And then we get the REAP grant, which is um forty thousand five hundred, and again. Um, that could be more than what we have. Um. But that is, that is what we use for salary for a teacher. So all these lines here would be up in the operating budget if we weren't to get these grants.
So does that ninety three thousand five hundred alleviate the amount that we're asking the town for? Me, meaning, I mean, that's the revenue, so the expense is already up top, correct?
No. This, their expense is not included up top. If the expenses, it's done differently at each thing, so if it were to be the um. It depends on where it. It is outside of your budget, so. If we did it the other way, I don't really have a way to show the revenue. Well, I do, I could, but. This is the way we've always done it and we do this in most elementary schools. Um, because we don't have control technically over the revenue. That goes directly to the town. Um. So I'm guessing that's why we've always done it this way, but no, you'd have to add that um. Ninety something thousand to the operating budget if we lost these grants.
Okay, so those three receipts, when they come in, because they're earmarked for Norris, they're going to town hall. So then, so then do you notify town hall to charge these expenses against it?
Yep, they are, yeah, they're, they're on a particular line, yeah.
And that's why it's outside of the Norris budget.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the last page is your preschool section. Um. And that is just what we pay for out of the, the preschool revolving account that we have. Um, I did reduce the transportation a little bit, um, because. Um, I believe we didn't pay, yeah, we didn't pay quite that amount, so I thought I could reduce it a slight amount. Um, and again, um, our preschool. Balance was doing really, really good, so, so good that we thought we may be able to purchase that van. Um, coming into twenty two. Um, or maybe even twenty one, I can't remember now, I think maybe it was twenty one, but with COVID hitting and um the fact I think we used. Our typical year might be um twenty three students paying, and this year we have six. So, um. This is kind of a wait and see on that account, but I did use the, almost the same amount that we used in the prior year. Um, looking at it quickly, it looks like I would have a ending balance of around. Um, forty four, four eighty eight at the end of um FY twenty one. But then you get revenues coming in too for, for twenty one, so.
Okay. Is everybody good up to this point?
Um, can I ask one other question about? Salary for. How does the salary for sped teacher compared to the salary for? I'm sorry, quote unquote, regular teacher?
Uh, each, each teacher's salary is based upon. Um, their, technically their years of service and where they are in holding degrees. So. We have columns. And again, we can share that with you. Um, to show you what. Um, what those columns are. If you haven't seen it, I can show you the salary chart. So you can see how it's based columns and steps. So in other words, they, they may come in with a bachelor's, which is rare now because. Um, if they do have a bachelor's, they at least have to get to a master's within a certain period of time. Um, and then it goes to masters and then there's a masters and fifteen credits. So if they got fifteen credits above their masters while they're teaching with us. Um, then they would move to that column. And then they may get thirty credits. They would move to a master's thirty. And then they might get their um, CAGs. They'd move to a CAGs and they may get their doctorate. They would move to a doctorate. Um, so the doctorate would be the highest column. Um, so sped teachers and regular teachers are on the exact same scale.
Thank you.
Bobby, this is Lucy. Hi.
Hi Lucy.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
The question, is the total for the Norris budget six million, seven hundred and whatever, thousand dollars in total?
No, it's.
Hold, hold that Bobby. I'm gonna let you answer the question, but. Um, I, I recognize Lucy as a town clerk, but she's not a member of either two committees that are meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know I couldn't speak. I apologize. Sorry.
I didn't want to go down the road.
No, that's okay. You don't have to answer. It's fine.
Nope, you're right, but. Let's go ahead and answer, answer that question, Bobby.
So at this particular moment, it's five million, five eighty-five, oh fifty-two.
Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have. For purposes of our discussion, let me share this other. Screen here. So the, the initial budget is the five point five. Sixteen point eleven percent increase. The document that I got was that the towns recommending or would like us to get to a two point two five percent increase. A four point nine, which is the difference of six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And then here I just did a running scale. I mean, it goes on, but. You know, we all know that the property taxes go up two point five. So. You know. Our goal is to get to two point two five. We can see how we get there. The, we can get down to two point five or two points of five somewhere. Down there might be a little more realistic, but I feel this is what the next two hours. We're gonna go over.
John, I, I would just have one. Um, one issue there. The, the four point nine, the four nine one eight, four ninety-four.
Yep.
Was a guesstimate. I think from Ed. Um, for the purposes of, of, you know, preliminary. Estimates, if you will, so that we could complete the rest of the budget process.
Yep.
But if everybody came in with a. Uh, budget one proposal was basically level funding. And if that were the case. Your budget one number should have been four eight, one oh. Which would be the budget for fiscal year twenty-one. So I don't think you can start. I mean, that's, I think that's where you gotta start is the four eight one oh. So if you're taking the, the exercise that you have on here, the request amount less the recommended budget. I think the recommended budget should be the four eight one oh, so that the deficit would be. To my estimation, and again, this is me, this is not the committee. It just pushed. When I got this, this afternoon.
Right, we did talk about this when, when uh, select board member Roland brought it to us. And one of our issue, one, not one of our issues, when we discussed the three levels, you know. Same money you got last year, two and a half, uh, two and a half increase or same money you got last year, contractual increases only. And then everything you want, those three options. The, what we said to him is the school only gets the seven one budgeted. If we set a level funded zero number, we, because we have, because the school committee actually votes it. Once we send our number over to the town. That whatever budget we sent to the town has to go to the voters and they can vote it down. And then they can consider um, finance or select words recommendation for an alternative budget. So if we send it over at flat, we would never have the ability to go up that two percent or one percent. Bring that, so. I'm, I'm happy to do the exercise and see if the committee will read a seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars with the cuts. I don't. That's why we, that's why we were at the two point two five or the two point five and not the zero.
Ken, do you understand that difference in process?
No.
Now, Matt.
Different, the school has a different process that they have to follow by law than the other departments.
Yeah, I guess I understand that. I don't know, is it fair? But what can you do about it, I guess is.
It's just the difference between an elected board.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and Matthew, just because I had to speak to somebody else, you, you are allowed to speak because you're the liaison to the school committee. So you have a spot over here. Okay. So. Before, I guess, process of order, I would rather. Unless they object, I'd rather start with administration's thoughts. On where they believe, if, if anywhere, that adjustment should be made before we just. Hear from the committee members on where the cut should be. So if you want to start with the scalpel.
Could, can you share that doc, the other document that we sent?
Uh, yes, I can. Just give me a second to pull it up.
And um, just so you know, I, I did use the. The uh, four million, nine eighteen, four ninety-four on this document as well, because that's what I had on the sheet that was provided to me from the town. Um, opening budget attachment for annual town meeting warrant. Um, so we can do it differently or whatever, but. Just so you know why I started there. So it, within this budget, there are um, items that were added. And so we're gonna run over those and show what that would do. To that deficit. You know, the gap, I should say, between our request and what the town has.
I'm, I'm pulling it up. I only printed it out, I guess I didn't say. I'll have it up in a second.
No worries. Yep, that's good. So um, what we started with is the ads that we had. Um, and Eliza identified them in order. Whoop, you're muted, Eliza.
You want me to go over this?
Sure.
Bobby's been talking all night. So, um, but you can help me out if I need it, obviously.
Yeah.
So I prioritized all of those increases and you see that on the left side, the priority of the request. Um, going from. The first priority meeting increased the substitute line because it's a have to, right? That was. Uh, voted out by the school committee to increase the substitute line. So it's not something that we can really get away from. But the most important things that I need are going, our first, second, third, fourth, and then all the way up. So if we cut the ninth thing. The twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy, it will show you um, where we would then be at. So. If the, um, if we thought the town asked, asked for four million, nine eighteen and our gap was. Six hundred and sixty-six thousand, then you minus the twenty-four thousand, one seventy, it would give you six forty-two, three eighty-eight. And then we went down. Uh, professional development. This was something that we were going to add two days through the school year. Uh, the, the union didn't want to add the two days to the school year for professional development. So we would cut that forty-seven thousand, two sixty-seven, and that would give us the five ninety-five, one twenty-one. And we would um, take away that increase of our speech language therapist and preschool for. Eighteen point nine, which is only seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven now. Um, and you can see, you know, going down the line. It's hard to prioritize. If I have to get to a number, I have to get to a number. So we would get down to three ninety-seven, seven oh one, which is still a difference between what. We, what we need and what the town asked, although. You're like, now it's, it might be a bigger gap. Um, and then we would have to get creative after that, uh, to further reduce the gap. Which is cut a halftime math interventionist. Um, that we had put into the budget prior to. Um, we do some of our curriculum supplies from forty to thirty thousand. Uh, reduce some supplies, utilities and other things. Forty thousand dollars from there and then the, one full-time uh, teacher. Or, you know, physician, which would be a fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, which is equivalent to a teacher. Which would increase our class size. At this time, we only have two grade levels where we have uh, four classes. At those two grade levels. So I would have to pick one of those two grade levels to cut. You know, it, it wouldn't be a teacher as essentially from, from that grade level. So I don't want people to think that that's the, the case. It would be. Just like a teacher and then we would have to uh, increase class size on that one of those two. So we would get to two sixty-three, six forty-five as a gap at that point.
Do we know if any of these cuts that were being proposed here would bring us below the state mandated net school spending amount?
What's that?
I didn't look at that.
Do we know, do, where we know, would, do we know if any of these proposed reductions in our proposed budget would bring us below the? Minimum net schools spending for each student?
I didn't look, but I can look at that.
Thank you.
Maybe over the next couple of minutes, Matthew, that'd be an excellent question if you could track down the answer for us here and. Also, I just want to caution everybody as we move forward, as, as how I think maybe the evening's going to go. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there are only two positions currently, two employees at Norris that are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. The other, the other two are on professional employment agreements. Any reduction in workforce will follow whatever is spelled out in the collective bargaining agreements. Or and, and or the employment agreement. So please refrain from. Trying to identify by grade, say I want to cut X number of teachers in this grade. It's, it, we're gonna follow whatever the process is. If and when that becomes the direction we're going in. I don't want to use anyone's names or positions. Thank you.
Just have one more question. I have a question about the S R funds. Does that money come in? Where does that money come in on this? Budget versus gap? Like, is it included already in the budget or is it additional part of that gap? Hundred and fourteen thousand?
It's not included in this budget at all, or um, it's, it really shouldn't. The S R two funds really shouldn't be used to. Um, supplement your budget. It's to be used for. Um, taking care of items that are outside of what you would typically need. So, um, for instance, HVAC system, typically you could go along with what you currently have, but. Um, and I'm not saying this is a case for Norris. I'm just giving it as an example. Um, but in this case, you could use that as a, a thing to remedy, you could use that money to remedy. The HVAC system. You could use it to purchase PPE supplies. Um, you could use it to um. Fund an additional custodian that's needed for the cleaning COVID related. Um, but you really can't put it in, into your budget itself.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But for clarification, we, we did go, because it's on this list multiple times, we did go to a one-to-one school. We did go from cable to fiber at an additional expense of nine thousand dollars a year. Because of COVID, could that fiber cost? Be part of it? And then. I guess the thought process, only because of COVID, we say we need this, we now need to have a full-time IT person. Is the half of that salary while we're dealing with COVID eligible for. Oh, this, and, and, and that being said, I'm reluctant to tie individual compensation to grants or one-time monies. Because it only kicks the can down the road to that year.
And, and I can let Kate clarify that, but in, and yes, I, I think it could essentially. Um, the problem with that, I think, is. You're just down the road, you're gonna continue these. So now it's gonna come in, say, to the FY twenty-three budget.
Yeah.
And it's gonna seem like an increase. So you could, you could kick the can down the road as that saying goes. Um, but. You know, it, it, it could be an option. And again, I think Kate could weigh in if she is, if I'm totally wrong. Oh, no, Bobby, you're not totally wrong at all. Um, but grant funding is very, very restricted. We have to use the grants as they are written. S R two is specifically to help K to twelve schools. Prevent, prepare for and respond to the impacts of COVID nineteen. And even under that, they get very, very specific about what you can and can't do. So Eliza and I work together and we work with Bobby. We're, we're, work to try to, to propose a budget that the state then has to approve. And they approve things um, under the, the rubric that they've created. Right? So this is, this isn't money that is just. You know, we can just decide however we want to use it. It's, it's very, very controlled and that's true for every grant. That, you know, we apply for. I mean, it's, it's a, it's not as simple as adding it to your budget.
Okay, it sounds like what you just said is there's already a budget in place for this money that was used to get this money.
There is a, I had to put, well, not, not just me, um, Eliza, Bobby and I um, had to put together a budget in order to get the grants. You know, there, there are deadlines in order to get the grants. Approved. So we had to, I had to put together a budget in place um, to, to have the state approve that budget. But they also recognized that school districts will need to amend the budgets as necessary. And that happens pretty much every year. I will have to amend a grant based on the needs of a particular school.
Right. So, okay, because I get, I was confused. I thought the S R two money was a per capita, per student calculation. Coming from the feds.
Which may be, but it doesn't change the fact that they control how we spend that money.
Okay. So we're right, so is this, is, is this money that's per capita that has been set a spurt, certain way? Or is this money that was awarded to us based on a budget?
No.
Put together and submitted.
It is, it must be spent in very particular ways.
Got you. Okay. Julian, did that answer your question on the answer?
It did. I was thinking, you know, the electrical costs have, you know, there was no savings there and we had to run the fans for. Full-time huge electrical account, like amount compared to previous, what we would have budgeted for, something like that. Is that?
No. It, no, it won't let us offset basic operating costs. Um, there, it's basically. Things to, you know. things to, you know, evidence-based activities around curriculum, um, educational technology. They are on, and this is unusual, allowing for school ventilation system improvements. Right? They will allow for COVID testing, PPE, um, and any kind of planning that we need to do around closures. Um, it's, it's, yeah, it's very, very specific, but this is all public information. It's available on the Desi website as to how the grants must be spent. It, it's, they do create, um, quick reference guides if you don't want to weigh into the, all the details, but that, that is all public information.
And, and additionally, so say we budgeted eighty thousand and we used eighty thousand. You can't, it would, you could potentially do it if, say, you spent a hundred and ten and you only budgeted eighty. And you could attribute that to those COVID-related costs. Then you could potentially do it that way. But if it was within the budgeted amount, you could not.
So, and I realize I didn't do it. I'll send out all the, all the S R documents and that. I'm just noting that I didn't send that to you guys. I had time to read, so.
When, John, when you send those to the town, can you send them to me too? Just so I know what's, what they're getting and so I don't duplicate efforts.
Yep.
Thank you.
A question. Um, don't know whether you folks have any further edification to that. The grant coming from, uh, the federal government, AKA the American Rescue. Do you have, have you gotten any further information as to, as far as schools are concerned, what? What and when and how?
I have not received, um, any further information. I did hear back when they first sent out what the towns would be getting for their allocations.
Right.
I did hear that there would be a separate one for schools, but I've not seen any update on that. And I don't know if Kate has.
No, not yet. I mean, are you referring specifically, there is what we now are referring to, um, informally as S R three. Is that what you're referring to?
Hmm. No. No, just, no, this is the American Rescue that.
Okay, so that, no, in terms of that particular, um, set of funding, we haven't heard anything.
Okay. Right, well, that's pretty much what I've heard. People just don't know what's going on, but I wasn't sure whether or not from, on the educational side, there might be a different.
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so. Just on quick math, those changes, um, proposed by administration gets us somewhere in the neighborhood of a ten and a half percent increase. I, I have one other, uh, question, um. Can I get the current, Lisa, can, can you just verbally tell me the current enrollment numbers by grade?
Or?
Uh, kindergarten, uh, well, potential kindergarteners coming in, in the fall. This changes daily. We have more kids enrolling. Sixty-four.
Yep.
Grade one is sixty-seven. Grade two, fifty-seven. Grade three, sixty-four. Grade four, fifty-seven. Grade five, seventy-five. And grade six, fifty-five. This is for next year though. This is not, this, this is, I rolled it over.
Yep. And then the, um, each grade receives X number of, of specials per week, which would be done by staff outside of their main classroom. Like, I think K through three are in the same classroom and four, five and six, they start rotating around or something like that.
Okay, right now, yes, K to three stay in their classes all day. Uh, four, five and six are sub-subject-specific.
And each, each grade level receives at least three specials a week.
Right now, art, music, gym and library, four.
Four. Where does the committee want to go next?
Just have a question on the fiscal year twenty-one budget. What is the number? Because I'm having trouble finding it of the current budget. Is, is it, we're next to the general fund line? Where I see a forty-eight, ten?
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's our budget right now?
Yep.
Okay.
What, uh, what are the class sizes?
Um, well, John, if you.
Yeah, I can, I.
If you stop sharing your screen, I can tell you. I don't have to share my screen. I just have to get to a document that I don't think I can do when you're sharing your screen. So for next year, kindergarten classes with four teachers looks like sixteen in each class. That's an estimate because as I said, we're going up, you know, day by day. In grade one, for next year, I have four teachers and I have seventeen per class. Roughly seventeen, seventeen, seventeen and sixteen. Grade two with fifty-seven students, it would be nineteen students per class. In grade three.
How many teachers? Four?
In second grade, three teachers.
Three.
Yeah, nineteen per class. Um, in grade three, three teachers with sixty-four students, it's twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two students per class.
Go ahead.
In grade four, I currently have four classroom teachers. But next year, there'll be fifty-seven kids in a class. So I'll be moving, you know, that, everybody knows there'll be some movement going on. Because this year we had seventy-five kids, so there were four teachers with seventy-five kids. Next year it's fifty-seven students with probably three teachers. So it'll be nineteen in each class. And then in fifth grade, those, there will be seventy-five kids in fifth grade. And this year there's only three teachers, so somebody's going to have to move, like I said, and we will be at nineteen students per class. And then in grade six, next year, there'll be fifty-five students and three teachers with eighteen and nineteen per class.
So, again, just because I know not everybody has, I had to look this up myself. What the collective bargaining agreement says, and Article eight specifically addresses the class size. Paragraph A, the parties agree that a workable class size is important to effective teaching. To the extent reasonably possible, the committee agrees it will target an average class size of fewer than twenty-five students for each grade and classroom while having no more than thirty students in any one class. The above class size applies to single teacher classrooms. So we apply the average target of twenty-four across the board. That means that we need twenty-two classroom teachers. Plus the specials.
And that was all written before COVID, when we had to work on spacing the kids out into the classroom. Worked really hard this year on making sure that each classroom size had adequate spacing between each child. Because of, there's still no vaccine for the children. So none of them are going to be vaccinated. Definitely coming into the fall, so. So I think increasing class sizes would be a huge problem from a public health perspective.
So. None of the children would be vaccinated for next September?
No, they're just, they're just starting trials for the kids.
Under, under sixteen, right?
Yep. So they won't have a vaccine. They're, I'm projecting a year out. So we might see it at the end of next school year. I would think I would be surprised if it's earlier. But we have to anticipate that the kids aren't going to be vaccinated for the fall.
And just to, just to clarify, Julian is, is a nurse practitioner here locally. She has some authority on it.
But the staff will all be vaccinated.
Yep, sixteen and older are all eligible for vaccinations.
Well, the staff that choose to.
Right, we have not mandated it. I don't think I can correct, well, right.
And we talked about school choice and just what that does to our class sizes. So we ran into with the seventy-five, the class with seventy-five kids, just trying to space them out became really problematic. So it, we're at four and a half feet across the board for everybody at this point. Or four feet, I think.
So. Eliza, I'm just drawing a blank. So when we had, when we had the kids equally spaced out in the classroom, what was, what was the child count? Was it twelve, twelve kids in the class?
And we had them six feet?
Yeah.
Fourteen. Well, the most was fourteen.
Are there any other restrictions in the collective bargaining that would fall? Um, within this same similar category?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, the only other ones I, I don't think would apply and it just has to do with starting times and times of that, but. And, uh, so, and so I guess basically that language gives us a bare minimum staffing. And right now, um, what, what is your, your FTE count for, um, the, the teachers association? An all-in?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry. How, how many teachers in the building?
I was looking right at you, Eliza. Yes, um, not the parents and, and not the other sports. I can. I can pump it down.
And you're, you are including special teacher, specialized teachers, specialists, like, you know, um.
Yeah, because those are, those are.
Reading teachers. Yeah.
Is it seventy-five?
It's about seventy-five.
Yeah, so there's seventy-five teachers that fall under this, like, this particular group. This bare minimum number says we need twenty-two, but then you add in the specials that we would have to have. Because the full-time, the primary classroom teacher has contractual breaks in there and that's where art, library and gym come in. And then you fold in the special education teachers that would drive that number up. And, and it may be that we have to be a, because you're proposing, the administration right now is producing, proposing one cut.
Or the equivalent.
The equivalent of a position, yes.
Right. No.
And I don't know, huh. You know, we, we could get creative with that. It doesn't necessarily mean increasing class size, but, you know, without, you know. It's hard to talk about things without knowing what you might be talking about. Then people start making assumptions. So I'll just say it's, it's the equivalent of a full-time position. We would do it, that would least impact student instruction.
Yeah, and.
And, you know, I know that Julian had talked about, um, COVID and spacing and numbers, but we also talk about, we also think about do we want to increase class size now when we're trying to increase support for students because of the pandemic? And because of, I hate to use it, but learning loss, um, you know, some of the S R money would, I would love to use for reading intervention materials and reading support materials for students because we know that we need to, um, increase individualized support for students because of being half, half the year re- remote for two days, three days a week. Um, and assessments for students because of the pandemic and things like that. So it's, it's not the time to increase class size, right? When we have students who were learning remotely for a majority of the time this year. Not in K one and two, because they did come back earlier, but they still lost March, April, May and June of last year and then September, October, November, they were here only two days a week. In those younger grades.
Right. And then the other thing I would say, and I know it's, you know, by, by the end of the night, some cuts are going to have to be made, but you know, mostly cuts that are recommended here, and I understand why they're on the list are just going to potentially drive up the out-of-district placements. I mean, the, the, you know, these are intervention, you know, math. Adjustment counselors. I mean, the only thing out here that I say, yeah, right off the bat is go ahead and eliminate professional development. You know, we, we offered it, they chose not to accept it. Okay, fine, that's water over the bridge. Chop the forty-seven thousand dollars off. But I don't know how we just got done spending over two hundred thousand dollars on technology to make this a one-to-one school with the bulk of that money coming from outside of town to then say, but we can cobble it together with, who I'm sure is an individual that's very capable, but only dedicating half their time to a hundred and twenty faculty members and four hundred and eighty students.
You know, John, I just want to say at this point, this is the sort of short-sighted thinking that I've seen going on here for years where we're, you know, trying to pinch a penny here right now, but we're going to, we're even considering removing half of our math interventionist, which is a position that we've long needed to get our students to where we needed. We just managed to get the language-based learning program enacted after those cuts had been made eight years ago. Just to sort of reel back in a few more students from going on a placement. These are optional things that we can say no to. These are things that we need to take action on now that's going to save money for the district down the road. We shouldn't even be thinking of considering these things for cuts.
Well, and not only to, uh, you know, it's about the dollar amounts, but, uh, points that Nancy raised earlier, like the, uh, the trauma. Uh, and now I'm speaking out of authority because I'm a trauma specialist, um, but the trauma caused by the pandemic um, is something that has taken a toll on students. So their social emotional needs. Uh, keeping those kids in their communities because we've invested to keep them in their communities could have good effects for the students, which is the reason why we do all of this, by the way, not money. Um, but it could have a good effect for the students down the road and it could end up saving us money because we can keep from spending eighty grand a year. Like, that's a very high price tag to send kids away. When again, you know, the, the uh, number for a sped teacher was like seventy-five on that list, I think. So for each out-of-district placement, we could get one full-time sped teacher. That just, the numbers seem to be in the favor of adding bodies, um, not taking them away.
Exactly. These are extraordinary times. We haven't had a pandemic since, what, nineteen eighteen? We need to do, take every measure we can to save our children here. This isn't a time to be penny-pinching and pound foolish.
Well, it, and I, I just mostly agree with you, but I need, but, you know, this, you're, I don't believe your comments, Gregor, right?
Oh, it's just generally towards our committee in general.
To the town.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, given the, the impact of COVID, I've just, out of curiosity. What, what happened to the eighty thousand dollar tuition child during COVID? Did he still, did he or she still continue to go wherever they were? Original going?
Yeah, and, um, some, some of the out-of-district placements did have remote learning, but the state mandated that we, excuse me, continue to pay the full tuition because they wanted to be sure that those programs were viable after the pandemic was gone. So they didn't want those programs to lose their tuition. So we had to pay in full. So we had to pay in full, even if the students weren't receiving in-person instruction.
Bobby, do you have a chance to find any details on net school spending?
Yeah. So for FY twenty-two, the required net school spending. For Norris School is six million. Seventy-seven thousand five ninety-five. But you can count. There's items from the town side that you can count, so in addition to our actual school budget, they count charter. Tuition. And choice out. And then they can add administrative costs. There is insurance benefits. For retirees and for active employees that get counted in there. But there are some additional costs on the town side that would be able to be counted outside of the elementary budget.
What does that number relate to? I'm sorry, Bobby, what is that?
That's, that's what the state sets that you have to as a school district spend. You have to spend six million seventy-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-five.
Based on our four hundred and thirty-nine students?
Correct. They have you listed for twenty-two as four hundred and forty-eight. So. The last year was five million nine nineteen one eleven. Just for comparison. I mean, this current year, not last year, but this current.
But you said that, that the town takes a credit or an offset for vocational tuition? One point two million. Transportation related to vocational?
Not transportation. They do, they do. Put, we do put that in because they, the town could receive some reimbursement on that. But that doesn't count. The transportation does not count towards net.
And what were the other credits?
If benefits. If benefits for retirees and cur- current employees. Are included, I would imagine the town is well over that.
But it's not, it's only school employees. It's not town employees, only school, yeah.
Right, but if it's retirees as well.
And I can verify that the insurance, I, I just know that's one of the things that I have to get from the town, so I'm pretty sure that is. Included, and I can verify that too. And then the other, John, where the charter. Oh, choice out. And then they can put in what's called an administrative fee. And that's a, a per pupil. It's not very large, but it is a number that they can put in. Against it.
Okay. Yeah, so not knowing what the retirement piece is, that person said five point five million. And then. Which, which, I guess that's, that's the. Reason for the exercise to see what is the bare minimum number that we have to get to. Where is it compared to the four point nine? I, I say that we have to get to that, that we're being asked to consider.
And just to be really clear, there is, they allow you a five percent cushion. In there, but if you go over that little five percent cushion. If you fall, say, six percent under the net school spending. Then you are required to pay that amount. Into your next year's budget. So there is, there is a, a charge that you, so to speak, that you would receive if you fall under the net school spending. Which you, Southampton has done. A long time ago in the past. But then, at least since I've been doing this, they did get one warning, which was within the five percent. So we do, it is something we have to watch, but over the last few years, you've been well within.
But is this, is the six oh seven seven apples to apples with the five five eight five?
Let's. Well, no, because the six oh seven seven five ninety-five is what we have to spend.
Right.
We have a budget of five five eight five oh fifty-two, right?
Yep.
Then you can add in. Charges that your town. Pays on behalf of students, so choice out, charter out.
Oh, all right.
And that sort of thing. So there's town expenditures that aren't involved with the local elementary budget. That are included in that net school spending cap that you need to meet.
Okay. Do you want me to speak to some of those or not? I don't have the insurance numbers, but I have some, I have some of the other ones.
Sure. Well, I don't know.
Think, go ahead.
Yep, I'm just looking here. So Bobby, I'll tell you the ones that I have here. Local school transportation.
Transportation doesn't count towards net school spending.
Vocational tuition.
Yeah.
If we just take into, which we, what would be the best practice here in terms of a conservative estimate to take? This present year's budget? I mean, because that's the number that moves around, right? I mean, that's the one that it depends on who's, who's going, who's applied, and then there's. An acceptance, and then some kids choose to attend and some kids don't. I mean, it's such a, it's a.
Well, it, it is, but the current, the current placeholder right now is one point two million, and last year's budget was ninety-two.
Yeah, last year's budget was nine eighty-two.
Right, and, and twenty twenty expenditure was eight oh two. I mean, that's. That almost implies that there's a two hundred thousand dollar padding there, which if we, if you leave it there, then you're taking it away from the schools. But I'm assuming Bobby's doing that based on those that have expressed interest.
Correct.
She's being ultra-conservative. And, and then usually when we get closer, the town says, well. We know historically, we only have like eighty-seven percent go.
The town has historically always reduced that number, yes.
The number that the towns, the number that the town is working with right now for that. Is, is. Uh, one point zero seven four million, call it. One million seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars. That's the number. The town is, we have not approved anything, full disclosure here, but that's the number that we're working off of, which. You know, I, I do, I do think needs some re-looking at or better understanding, but that's, so that's, that's, and then last year's vocational transportation, does that count?
It, it doesn't count towards net school spending. It is reported. And then you may get, depending on what they have in their appropriations for that, you may get a slight reimbursement, and the town would actually, the town gets that reimbursement themselves.
And then I don't have anything on.
Charter school tuition?
No. I, I was told that that comes from the cherry sheets.
Yeah, um, and I did it based off the actual. Enrollments that we have right now for twenty-one, and then eliminated, you know, sixth graders. So it's, like I said, crystal ball, always subject to change. But for twenty-two, I have that at sixty-three, three forty-six for school choice. And forty-nine, three thirty-two for charter. But if you take a look on that budget document in the FY twenty, you'll see that I did that same, very same thing in FY twenty. And I budgeted forty-nine thousand, it came in at sixty-six. And charter, I budgeted thirty-seven, it came in a hundred and ten. So, you know, it, it just depends on who decides to go in. But for this exercise, I would say we could use the numbers that are put into the preliminary budget. Of the sixty-three, three forty-six and forty-nine. Three thirty-two.
So if we do all of that, like where, if we add those in on our present. You know. Where does that put us with regard to net school spending? Given that the net school spending is six million seventy-seven thousand and change?
Well, I think the other piece that's missing is we don't know right now what the. Schools portion of the active retirees from Norris on the. It's probably six for years, hopefully it's not seven.
It's, it's quite a bit, but. And I don't, if I, oh, I might be able to see. If you really want me to. I can see what we did last year.
Just as a placeholder, so I mean, we know we're trying to drive a number.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should just do conservative estimate. I mean, th- this is not a number to miss.
Correct. Let me just see. And you also get the employer retirement contribution, and that was. And again, I'd have to verify that those do actually count towards net school spending, and I'm assuming. They do as they are on that report, but I will verify that. Two twenty-one, six twenty-five was last year's. Insurance for active was six ninety-two. Eight forty-nine, and for retirees was one oh one, one oh three.
Two million ninety thousand. And I just. Need the school choice number. As a plug holder, as a placeholder.
What was it?
Two million ninety thousand seventy-seven dollars. And then, what do you want to use, school choice, sixty-five thousand?
Yeah, I did the sixty-three.
All right, so let's use, we'll use the number that's up there.
Yeah.
So. That gives the starting point of two million one fifty-three. Four twenty-three. With offsetting this. Six million seven seven, six million seven 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 five ninety-five?
Yes, yep.
So, yeah. Four million six twenty-four one seventy-two. So. So that if we came in at the two point two five, we'd be two hundred and ninety-four thousand above that school spend.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, John.
If we came in at the two twenty-five, we would be two hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars above that school spending. So I think that takes us back to looking at that four point nine. Number as a target. And what the committee. I guess, starting with what the administration was put forward. Any, all, or none. Of those options are up for a vote to cut. I'll go with the easy one. I, I will, I will motion that we eliminate the. Or that we reduce professional development by forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second.
Discussion on that line, I don't. You're muted, Greg.
Oh, sorry. What was that professional development going to be? They just got cut?
The two additional days that the association declined.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
Two additional days of what? I'm, I'm not hearing.
Sorry, it, it was to cover two additional professional development dates so that the. Association or the teachers can get up to speed on the new curriculum. That was being purchased to start the year off, but they declined the offer. We had it in there as a placeholder.
All right.
So we can zero that out.
Yeah, that's the low-hanging fruit, for sure.
Gotta start somewhere. So. Other discussion? Roll call? Greg?
Bennett, I.
Allison?
Great aunt, I.
Austin?
Rogers, I.
Julian?
I'm sure I.
Yeah, lumber, I. Okay, that's cut.
All right, so we're done?
I might be. Does anybody want to, well. Let's at least go through the administration's proposal. All right. So number nine, I mean, I jumped to have number nine. Does anybody want to make a motion right now to? Eliminate the addition of a point five to technology department to have a full-time technology person?
I just want to say, if you do, you're gonna waste all the money that we've spent on the equipment and the chance to utilize it. Half a person is not enough to support that.
Allison?
I was thinking about the point five math interventionist, as much as we need it. It's. A chunk. We do need it, but.
My question to Elisa on that is, could you just clarify my, my number five on the list is a point five math? Interventionist, and then under further cuts, it's a cut point five math interventionist. If we did both of those, does that eliminate one? How many math intervenes? Interventions?
Oh, okay, so the new item for this year are the one through nine things. Those were increases in the, in the budget.
Okay.
The one on the bottom, we would be cutting from last year's budget.
Gotcha, okay.
Deeper cuts, right?
All right.
So if we cut the, what, number five, it still leaves us with half of a math interventionist, a part-time.
Right.
Not that that's enough for a school of over four hundred, almost five hundred kids, but.
Their math, because they've lost so much time in the classroom.
Yeah, I can't support that.
No, I can't either.
All right, so the. The alternative for us. Is to make minimum cuts. Vote to pass this. And, you know, the finance committee would be. Within their right to make additional cuts or propose it. The town would get our budget first. The voters vote that down. Presumably, they would have to, because it would create an over-rex. Then the alternative, then what we're doing. Then, the alternative, then what we're doing is we're asking the finance committee to do our work. And come up with a number to submit, which then we have to come back and work with, so like. I mean, if the majority of you really wanna go through this whole thing and not make a single cut and ask another committee outside of the school to. See if there's anywhere else that we can make belt restrictions.
Do we really wanna go down that road of how many times Norris has taken the hit in the past at the expense of other departments? I mean, I don't think the town's in any possible way to support any, almost any of the cuts that these have been supported here. We would be aggregating our duty to the children if we endorsed any more of these. This isn't a time to be making cuts. This is time to be enhancing the services we provide to the kids.
I think this year highlighted how underfunded public schools are, like the whole country saw it. So now it's the time to prioritize and fund the schools is my, and and we have a lot of. You know, putting the pieces back together for our kids.
Oh, Ken, I mean, I just wanna, I just wanna throw some things in the in the ring here, like. Or just some things to consider here, and I understand that um. You know, this is kind of your first go around, really, at the at the budget. This is uh, this kind of is how we go here, at least how we have gone for the last several years. So this is, you know, welcome to a very difficult process. And I understand that we're late in the game here and that we would love to have more time to consider all of this stuff. But um, you know, you, you and I both have the knowledge of where all of this hangs in the balance with. Conjunction with other departments as well, right? And so that's. You know, your insight on that and what the asks are from other departments, where the increases are. Uh, the needs lists, you know, discussion and select board meetings uh, for using uh, operating stabilization. I mean, you, you, you do have the whole picture, may maybe even more so than I do, quite frankly. Um, but now that you have this piece. You know, I don't, obviously, you can't do this out of committee, but um, and. You know, it would be great to have more time, but I mean, I. I wonder if this does change priorities at all, really. Overall.
What do you mean?
Factor in the entire town, like where this, where things fall in terms of overall priorities now that we have the entire picture.
Well. You know what bothers me about this process? Now, we're sitting here with two committees that I, and I think. One of these committees should have made this decision before now. We started this process back in the middle of February, sitting with each of the departments. Each of those departments knew what the timelines were. And each of those departments pretty much met that schedule. And now. I might be new to this. I'm not new to numbers and I'm not new to department responsibilities. But all of a sudden, we're sitting with the, probably one of the biggest components of the overall town budget. That is coming down to day one to make a decision about. Okay, we know we've got a cut, but what are we gonna cut? Now, now I'm hearing people say, we're not gonna cut anything. We can't afford to cut anything. So. We're at the eleventh hour. And some of these decisions should have been made a couple of months ago, not tonight. So, I mean, my biggest question is, what size red number are we willing to deal with? What can we deal with? I mean, and and there are, there are some, there are so many things, I mean, this. The out of district stuff, just. Not out of district, I'm sorry, the the sped stuff. And tuitioning, that's a number that is totally out of our control, it sounds like, and yet it's, it has a major impact on the bottom line.
Right, it's almost worth a four hundred thousand dollar increase in this particular budget.
Quite honestly, I don't, I don't think I could justify signing off on anything tonight. I think this needs to be. With all due respect, I think the committee's gotta have this committee, this meeting among themselves and know that. You know, our charge, finance committee's charge is gonna be to come back to. To the select board with what we feel is a number that that we can afford. And I know everybody's got their priorities from the standpoint of. What their responsibilities are, but but. The numbers are. I don't know how we're gonna do it.
So. Well, you're the, you're the luxury of looking at this from a numbers perspective. We don't, we have this from a look. The number of lives.
Greg, that's not a luxury, believe me.
Yeah, I mean, I see your point, but this is lives we're talking about here. Of the, our youngest, most vulnerable population. The changes we're gonna do right now are gonna follow these people for the rest of their lives, which is a long time before them. We need to do what's necessary to save these kids. And it isn't cutting money from them. Bleed it from the other town departments. We paid in our blood in Norris in the past that way. We still haven't gotten back to where we used to be nine years ago for staffing numbers. We paid our dues. The town has to recognize it. If we have to go before the town meeting, you know, on the floor of the meeting and persuade the voters to go with that, I bet you I can get enough parents to show up to save our students. Let's instead craft a budget here that might be more difficult for some of the other departments with Ken's assistance and his greater knowledge of those departments. And make it work for our kids.
I mean, we did meet, uh, our budget meeting was on March eighth. But every regular meeting before that, we had a budget. Uh, item on our regular monthly agenda and Bobby updates us. She's almost, you know. She's been updating us for over six months on this upcoming budget. So we have reviewed it, but it's just, it's always comes down to the same question, where are you gonna cut? Because we're always faced with, it seems like we're always faced with people that come to the school with their handout for money. And it's like, well, we can't, it it equals, it equals losing services. For kids and then it has a compounding cost effect. Coming down the line through the sped department, like that's what happens to it, that's. And so, you know, how long are we gonna let? Eighty thousand dollars a pop go out of town? Cause that number's gonna go up too. Over time, it's gonna be ninety and then it's gonna be a hundred. That's what happens at the college level. It just escalates over time, so that number's gonna escalate per kid and number of kids. Because we're not properly funding the interventions early enough to catch the problems when we need to. And so now we're in this like catch up thing, you know, and uh. I'd rather make that case to the voters because I think the voters are gonna side with me. I don't think that they're gonna side against the kids. I think that there are enough families out there that get it. That get that these costs will compound. They will crush our town and will be crying for mercy later. If we don't do something sooner rather than later. So I'd rather make the case to the voters. And let them pull services away from children. I'm not gonna do it.
Okay, so I just want, I wanna add a couple of things here. One is, you know, clarify the record here a little bit is. On our, sometime in twenty eighteen, the town passed a by law. I didn't see it. I didn't know. I have a copy of it now. Central office has it. This is the same time that we did the budget last year. So to me, it didn't seem out of whack that we weren't doing it. It was in the middle of COVID, so, I mean, I don't think our town meeting was until August. But, the point is, we have to have the budget in no later than April first. We're way past that deadline. So we can't kick this kid down the road. That's on us for not knowing about it. We've taken steps correctly to go forward and and set the schedule on how it is. I don't have any issue going to the town and and asking for the budget, but I'm not gonna do it. You won't have my support unless we take the painstaking time to go through this. A contract says the average class size is a twenty four. We're, we're sitting at at fifteen now. Julian made excellent points as to why we shouldn't have that, why, why we should consider maybe something less than that. But, let's start with, this is what our contracts say we have to have. Here's what the number is. We're still not gonna be at that two point two five. But we're not gonna be sitting at seventeen percent we are right now. So I have no problem saying, here's the budget, it goes back. We're behind the eight ball because we're a month behind schedule on doing this, and that, that's, that's not a. I'm not gonna point fingers. I mean, the only thing I would say is, from my point of view, other than the update that we got at the school committee level. I didn't find out about this until last week, so I think communication on both sides of the fence could go a little further on on who they're talking to. Um, and we'll address that later, but tonight, we have a budget. The select board is meeting tomorrow night to determine its course of action. It needs at least two weeks of notice to post the warrants, move everything along. There is no more time. If you guys wanna vote, I will vote against it and you can pass this budget port of one. And send it over there, and when you guys all stand up for it, I will stand up opposed, saying, we didn't do the painstaking work. At the end of the day, we're sitting at ten percent to pick a number, whatever it is. At least I can say, we went through the lines, we made what we feel are the cuts. We understand it may not be deep enough, but it's as far as we can go. I don't think we've done that exercise, like. I'll get up my soapbox.
So, pick, pick, throw something out there that you wanna see gone, and then we can put that to a vote, but. Have anywhere that I can start with that.
Let's do each one, line by line alphabetical order, and we'll see where it goes. That's fair. If you wanna have it officially weigh in and go through the exercise and have us on the record, so be it.
Alright, let me just throw in one other thing here.
For the ninth and fourth priority. Are those two separate things? Like, how can someone use this, explain that to me real quick?
Um, the ninth one is technology support, a person, it's a person.
Okay.
And then the one, um. The fourth one is. One of them is a person, yeah, the first one is a person, the ninth is a person from a halftime person to a full time person. And the fourth one is technology to support one to one computers, and that is.
The bandwidth increase was about half of.
Yeah, so spectrum fiber nine thousand six ninety. Also, a, this Mosul managing system that would manage the one to one devices, which costs money. Data cabling that we would need, and that would be a hundred and twenty seven dollars per room. And so, E-rate funding would help with that, but these, all these costs add up to the seventeen thousand, I believe it is. Yeah, seventy.
The internet line is separate. That did not include the internet, cause that line is separate in the budget and that increased by. Nine thousand six ninety itself, so. Part, and we can, we, I mean, we can go back and look at that with with Kim and and shave some of that off, I mean.
Bobby, do you know if that's before or after the E-rate savings?
That would be after the E-rate savings.
Before I pull the screen up, Ken, did you wanna say something?
Yes, I had. I don't wanna be accused of not advocating for kids. My wife taught for twenty five years. And, I know. Know how involved she was. But what I'm talking about is. Specific, and I think it it came out loud and clear i- in the conversation tonight about a couple of things that. We can address perhaps differently. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars for transportation for four children. I mean, people talked about, you know, can we go out and buy our own van? Can we buy our own bus? Can we hire a bus driver? I mean, for, for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for, you don't need a bus for four, for four kids. And the others, you know, and the other side of it is, these tuitions. You know, eighty, eighty three, fifty, sixty three, fifty four. Somebody talked about hiring additional teachers. Does it make sense to bring the, you know, a couple of qualified teachers and keep the kids in school?
We did that with the language based classroom, yes.
Right.
We could get a teacher in to prevent that from happening in this cycle.
But I don't think you're gonna be able to make that decision tonight. That's. That's what I'm talking about. I think a lot of this stuff is. I don't profess to be an educator. You guys, you folks know. The ins and out of that. All I'm doing is looking at a number here and they just, those particular two items don't make sense. And they have major negative impact to this. Bottom line.
I do like Ken's suggestion right there about seeing what we can do to decrease the transportation cost, but I'm not sure what sort of logistics go into that.
That's right. It can't be, it can't be addressed tonight.
Right, but that's, I do like that sort of solution. Let's, you know, provide the same level of services and see if we can do it in a more efficient economies of scale sort of way. You know, with the right size transportation for those individuals.
So I think that I'm going to piggyback on something that Austin was talking about a few minutes ago. When I was hired in two thousand fourteen and began the job on July first, the budget had already been passed, which included cuts to. Um, the specials teachers were cut to four days a week, which included a full time position. Where each specialist lost twelve thousand dollars in their salary for that year. We also lost two teaching positions that year. And since that time, over seven years, we have not recouped one of those teaching positions. I have recouped a special ed teacher position because a classroom teacher retired. And instead of replacing that teacher with a classroom teacher, I I hired a special ed teacher because that's what we needed. We haven't been able to ever add any interventionists for early reading support. I had to turn a classroom teacher into an interventionist for this school year. We finally added the halftime math interventionist last time. The only time in the seven years that I've been here at Norris that we were able to do something really great. To prevent students from going out to White Oak. Was that language based program, and that was because we, an override was funded, if I'm not mistaken, for those of you who remember. So, you know, the snowball keeps going and going and getting bigger and bigger. Because when we don't support students reading and foundational skills in K to two. Those students that I get identified for special ed services, and then the special ed teachers are over. Overwhelmed with the numbers and then we can't meet everyone's needs and then someone goes out of district. If a student comes into Norris school with hearing loss and has to, and moves into town, let's say. Moves into Southampton with hearing loss and has to go to Clark School for the deaf because we don't have that kind of a support here. That's where that tuition's gonna come. It is our responsibility and our duty to educate all the students in the town of Southampton. So, one student moving into town with some sort of a disability like that can knock the whole thing off. I get it about tuition, I get it about transportation, I get it about, you know, I need another preschool van. And that has been on my capital plan and it has been on, you know, I was gonna go on the budget, but I can't see myself asking for a van. When I don't have, you know, a math interventionist. I feel like I have to prioritize what what is. The most important thing right now to educate the children, and Ken, I totally appreciate and understand what you're saying about. These crazy costs when it comes to out of district placements and the cost to transport, and I would love to find a solution to that. But like I said, I feel like the snowball, you know, just continues to get bigger and bigger with the, with the, the needs that we have. In educating the students that are, that are a little behind, which is normal, but every school should have a. Tiered system of support for students so that that does not happen, and we have never been able to. Uh, coordinate or have funding for a tiered intervention system for students here at Norris.
It looks like a lot of the line items that we're adding by increasing the BCBA support, additional adjustment to counselor. A math interventionist, a sped teacher are all aimed at supporting students who would be at risk for an out of placement. You know, school, so I feel like this is. You know, school, so I feel like this is putting in the money now to prevent that huge. Huge amount of money later on potentially. Is that correct in my understanding?
Yes.
So, uh, I have a question about that. So in the school. What is the difference between the role of the BCBA and the Adjustment Counselor?
The Adjustment Counselor can see students who have social emotional needs and need. Uh, that support weekly on an IEP or not on an IEP with behavioral goals. Social emotional goals that they may have, which I have a school Adjustment Counselor now. Uh, but we have seen an increase in students who need that type of support. And then the BCBA, I am looking to hire is for our youngest learners, the preschool. And kindergarten students, because we have an influx of students at the lowest levels who need that type of support. Focusing only on pre-K and K.
So, like, who does the FBAs, for example? If you have a student that needs an FBA, is that? Does that, or is that the School Adjustment Counselor?
No, well, we have a few people who can do them. Um, Nancy, I don't know if you're still on, but um, I know that my school psychologist can do an FBA. And sometimes we have contracted services that we have in our budget that we allow Levine and Associates. Um, a BCBA from them to do that FBA. That's correct, right, Nancy?
Yeah. And I just want to, I, if I can, we have, um, right now, we have a teacher. Who is a Sped Teacher and a BCBA. But she's at this point kind of, um, working two jobs. Because she's working with our very high-needs special ed students. And then she's also intervening with our students that are having social emotional. Upsets and can't be in the classroom, so they have to come out for a period of time. And that's not sustainable, right, Elisa, would you agree?
Correct.
With that, yeah.
So, uh, I guess for the Adjustment Counselor's side. Could we plug the gap temporarily by? By using outside providers, so using school-based therapists in order to plug the gap temporarily.
What is the cost there?
It's not, it's built to insurance. So that's what I did out of school.
Right, so if the parent will transport child to therapy appointments once a week, is that what you mean?
No, they, I used to go into the schools, so I did it in Holyoke and Springfield.
Yeah.
Chickaby. But I would go into the schools at the cost of the insurance company. People's, you know, whether it's state or private insurance, uh, and I would provide services in the school. Uh, and then I would go home with them and provide services to the whole family as a family-based intervention. Which is more a wraparound care anyway. Rather than, that's why I'm trying to figure out, like, what's the role there? Um, and could that be filled in a way that doesn't provide a cost to the school?
Possibly, in that scenario, isn't there somebody on the school side doing the administrative work and the billing?
No. The agency, the Mental Health Agency does all of the billing.
I thi- I think you would have to have family buy-in with that. You know, I can't go to a family and say, hey, would you access your insurance to get therapy? That we can then use at school, you know, it has to be something that's in place. That we would collaborate with the family around, but I don't see that as a. Um, like a school-based solution, really.
It gets tricky when students are getting pulled out of class to receive their therapy session too. Something I went into when I was a principal in another district. Um, and in in with having the School Adjustment Counselor in the building. Excuse me, there's that consistency and overlap between the classroom teacher and the School Adjustment Counselor. And how can the School Adjustment Counselor support the child in the classroom when needed? Or have to pull them out for therapy, um, when needed, so, you know, it's, it is an add-on, and. Um, that's all.
As far as the second steps programs that you've been using, is there follow-up, like, family-wise? Like, I know, I I teach second steps also, and there's a big family portion that can connect families to it. And show the different steps that you're teaching each week and the different themes, and then there's different things that they can do at home to follow through also. And the more, I mean, I find even with some of my students, the more they hear about it, both at school and at home, I know you can't force it at home. But the more it has helped and has greatly improved a lot of the behaviors we see in my preschool and kindergarten classroom.
Yeah, I know that that doesn't take the place of a School Adjustment Counselor.
No, absolutely not.
But, you know, our plan is to move forward with that, and this is our first year of implementation for sec- uh, the second step program. So we're kind of easing into it with making that home connection. Um, so, yeah, hopefully.
The other thing that I thought of as far as cutting costs is what about? One of the things, uh, is to go back to regular internet.
What does that mean?
Like, instead of paying.
Increase bandwidth or whatever, right?
Increased bandwidth, we go back to having a regular internet connection. Hoping and, you know, praying that we don't go back to full-time remote.
I have no idea how that, you know, that's a question.
Yeah, we're probably getting reimbursed a pretty significant amount of that through the E-rate, uh, program, which I know in my district, we just found out the information on yesterday. As far as what their approvals are for internet service, so we might want to see what the actual cost is, if we're getting the level reimbursement. Unless Bobby knows if that information came in today.
Yeah, no, that, uh, after the E-rate.
Okay, thanks.
The only cuts I could see is in the technology portion, because we have put a lot of money into technology this year, not necessarily from the town. Um, and it, as of right now, a lot of it isn't being used, so I can see maybe holding off on some of the technology pieces until the following year.
Yeah.
Are there any teachers currently using that increased bandwidth for supporting any students who are fully at home or anything of that nature? Because if you pull out, you know, your existing bandwidth right away on that, you're going to lose that connection instantly.
It doesn't, Greg, let me just ask you a question, does it matter how many people? It could be one teacher with.
I- i- it's no easy way to tell, it's a total amount of bandwidth they're using, I mean, if you have some teachers who are, you know. I have teachers who tend, sometimes tend to, you know, queue up like, you know, dozens and dozens of videos on tabs ahead of time, you're going to be using. And consuming more bandwidth than your average person is, so you can't really say it's a fast, hard number of people that way. It's it's more of like in the individual style that they have it. If you have a teacher who's, you know, more technologically advanced, who might be accessing multiple systems at the same time, you know, you know. Google meets or Zoom to interface with the children and Power School, whatever your equivalent, you know, grading system is, tracking of that. As well as YouTube to deliver video content, you're going to consume a lot more bandwidth than a user who's just using it for the more basic aspects of that. So that's kind of, I guess, question is, how much has our curriculum been integrated into those additional technological aspects? Is that, is that going to take a hit when we pull that away?
Right. You say, you know, are we zooming from school to home like we were? No, as you know.
Right.
Student here or there who is out because they're quarantining, and we might, you know, loop them in if if want. Um, if not, we're sending homework other ways. Uh, but if you're talking about YouTube videos that they might have students watch while they're home after school for homework. Or putting things on seesaw, or, you know, all of those things, I I can't tell you. Bridges online, teachers using it, foundations online, teachers using it, I don't have a. Of the amount of bandwidth that they're using, yeah.
And that should be a pretty easy report that Kim should be able to generate, so she could really generate, you know, a report that says, here's your average bandwidth utilization for any specific given day. You can sort of compare what that current usage is versus what the purchased amount is and see what the delta is, and that might give you an idea of what the impact is going to be.
Interesting that we're sitting here discussing cutting technology when. The select board is increasing their technology line items, or potentially to get fiber over to Town Hall. And they have a ad hoc committee that Kim is part of. You know, so it's, we're clearly on different priorities here in this.
I think technology should be a priority, but I don't think it's used that way necessarily here.
And if we pull back the bandwidth, it never will be. Teachers never going to have a good experience using it in school, they're never going to learn how to adopt it all the re- the rest of the time.
Well, the lower grades have shown a preference for pencil and paper. Uh, because of motor needs. So as soon as they were able to, they switched off of seesaw in favor of. Having kids holding a pencil, because they weren't, some kids weren't able to get it, like, the program was difficult to use. And I remember sending an email to my child's teacher saying, like, she's spending time on the assignments not because she doesn't get the concepts behind them. But because seesaw was making it difficult to complete the assignment, like, it wasn't tracking with the pen, or it's not real writing. Um, when they have to, like, be crunched over the side of the screen and and all that. So I think for, you know, maybe even half the school right away, they're going to go back to analog anyways. Because it's, it helps them to develop their, uh, their motor skills.
Sorry, I'll say, I mean.
Norris, I, so that's why I'm saying, you know, it's, there's probably ways to utilize it better in the upper grades. But I don't know that we're going to increase the efficiency that much in the lower grades. From the use of technology, just because, you know, there are skills they have to learn, like, they have to be able to write, they have to be able to. Read, like, those sort of things, that's kind of.
They have to use their fine motor, they have to manipulate a pencil, they have to, you know, do tactile things, and. That's not going to happen if they're on the computer all the time, so teachers are trying to, the younger grade teachers, kindergarten, first grade, want to move away from that. So that they still have the experience of. You know, what students need in in their early years, exactly.
I mean, sixth grade, fifth grade, even fourth grade, totally different story, because they would have had a lot of those skills already. So I think that's an entirely different, different thing, but again, like, to to John's point, if we're cutting something. I'm not going to cut staff right now, like, that's not going to be my first vote. I'm going to go towards things inanimate, um, so that we can maintain services. That are going to teach our kids how to read and write and communicate at the level that they need to, moving forward, so.
So can we just, can we go through an exercise here, and see if we can find any common ground? So here's the budget that we already went over with Bobby. As is, the only difference here on my column is over here in column O, see a color green, right? So this red, that's all central office, right, so that that ship is already. So we get green into ours, so all I did was throw in the percentages here. What what's jumping out, like, this first one jumps out thirty-eight percent. Office supplies increased by fifty-seven hundred dollars.
But that offsets.
What?
That one offsets down the sheet.
I know, but just going to go through the exercise.
Yeah.
At the end, then we just unsave it, so.
Hey, Jack, I said, speak a quick suggestion, we've been going for over two and a half hours, could we take like a three or four minute quick break, so I can go say goodnight to my kid and that sort of stuff?
Sure.
If you don't mind, because it sounds like we're going to go pretty late tonight, I'd appreciate that.
So it's, it's eight-ten, you want to recess for five minutes?
Yeah, if you don't mind, please.
Eight fifteen.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright. Keep the recording going, just. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
Give her one second and then we'll. So my thought process here is as we go down this, you know, like the contractual wage related things, we're just going to go over kind of bypass, but specifically look for the targets that are out like. This is contractual retirement payments. We don't, you know, that's whenever somebody decides to retire, there's a calculation in there. There. Salaries. Substitutes. I know why the increases in here. We also had a higher usage of substitutes this year, I think, because of COVID. I don't know. Maybe we don't need the full five thousand, but. Teachers, teachers aides, those are interchangeable with each other. So collectively, they're only one point six percent increase. That's under, this is our librarian. Professional development, we already adjusted. I took it down by the vote that we had. Curriculum supplies, we're at forty now, which was a, we wanted to hold the lineup where we were last year for the curriculum. Here we go. Again, you know, classroom supplies. And I think it seems like historically classroom and library supplies is always under, they had seventeen thousand, they only spent ten, they had twenty three, they, twenty two, they only spent four.
Did, is that one of the ones that got moved to?
I think oftentimes they, well.
I think she said something about the supply.
I am back. I'm just trying to eat a little something. So that's why I turn my camera off. But um. So your question was.
Just classroom and library supplies. And then the next line is special ed class supplies. Are those two often interchangeable?
No, we've actually tried to increase that line because typically they, they spend a little more, but it's only been interchanged with that classroom supply line. So that additional five fifty came from the classroom supply line. Then, what do you mean by they only spent four hundred? Cause I haven't, I mean, I didn't look up the line yet, but I'm not sure where you.
No, no, the what am I looking at? So the budget for twenty was seventeen thousand. They actually spent ten, so they underspent by sixty seven hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
And then twenty two went, twenty one went to twenty two thousand.
Yeah.
Which is an increase of forty seven hundred. And now it's going down to sixteen, which is decreased by six thousand.
That's right. But that was reallocated to different areas.
Is this outside services, contractual, professional psychology, psychiatric, professional salaries? Is that Levine?
No.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I think that's our school psychologist.
Which? Services?
Oh, no, the one above it.
Of the contract services for the five, three, seven, five. Which one are you about, John?
Already. Line one thirty.
Okay. Now that is the psych professional salary is the actual salary.
There's a psychiatrist assigned to Norris.
Psychologist.
Psychologist that works in the school full time.
That does the testing for special ed services when students are referred for services. We've had one for ever.
Okay.
All schools do.
And I'm guessing his, his number is, or her number, their number is based on usage because we were from sixty two to sixty six to seventy nine.
That's based on the contract. They, they are under the contract, the same as the teachers.
Okay.
They fall under the same.
There's our internet. So those two changes get us down to fifteen percent. So if, if we think we we take this from a bottom up approach on Elisa's list. I'm sorry, administrations list. And the worst thing we could do is reduce the equivalent of one FTE. And then the second wor- worse is reduce supplies. Curriculum, cut a half. I mean, at some point in there, he somewhat draw a lot, I mean, draw a magical line. If, say, we say it's between the third and the second. So we keep those one, two, three, four, we keep those four things on the bottom in the budget that were previously there. And the only increase that we're adding that's outside of our contractual increases is the extra five thousand for substitute teachers. And then to increase a point five to the BCBA or thirty thousand. Which I think if we do that, my math puts us at eleven percent. And then that might be as far as we can go tonight. Somehow, and I, I don't think it's the committee that does this. I think administration up in specifically, I think central office needs to look at those four individuals that are on out of district placement, you know. They're different prices, so they're not all going to the same school. So I can envision one going to Westfield, one's in East Hampton, the other ones in Hartford. You know, is it, is it feasible? Could we get, could we, could we take half of them? Could we take two? Put them on a van that we pay for? You know, are, are, can we do some creative thinking outside the box within the next twenty four to forty eight hours? Cause.
If we, if we buy our second preschool van, then does that have, then we have two vans. Can one of them be the transportation van for those out of district placements?
Yeah. And then, and I don't know, I don't know if the, if the window has already closed yet, but is there any chance that if, if buying this extra van, could that be done as a capital purchase? To eliminate, to basically cut that four hundred thousand dollar number in half. Could we get seventy thousand to reduce the budget by two hundred thousand?
But ju- just so you know, that is outside of the operational budget. Which I don't know if I looked on the towns, if they, what they budgeted for that. Local school, yeah. They, they didn't, well.
But the other district placement is within our core number.
The tuition, yes.
Tuition piece.
Yeah.
Oh, so we'd start to pay, yeah.
Right. Four eleven eight eight seven. Yeah. So they have only three hundred and eleven in there. So they, they're about a hundred thousand shy on that. From what, so in their document that I was given, they have three hundred and eleven, seven twenty five. And our amount, including the one sixty nine, nine forty five is four eleven, eight eighty seven. But we can do some, you know, creative looking and see if Kristen has gotten any closer to seeing what her routes are going to look like and if she could take on any of these kiddos. If we do buy one van to support the transportation for these four kids, it could be difficult to get them to all the different places. So it might not be that we could actually use one van to transport four kids, given the area, the distance between.
And the time that school starts, the time that preschool starts and ends. That's.
Right. But if we buy one van whose primary purpose is to, is to transport or accommodate two of the four out of district placements. That potentially would pay for itself, save the town money. And then it could be, it could be, then its secondary mission could be on the preschool side. So maybe just that afternoon program. Again, you know, without knowing the start time, end times and all that. It's getting creative. It's offering a potential solution. It's another pool of money that again, you know, perhaps the entire capital budget's already been spent for, but what I heard the other night was that the requests were I don't want to say slim. There weren't several requests because most people already used all their CARESAC money. I don't know, Matt, I'm not the chair of the committee, so maybe it's a dead issue. It can't happen this year anyway, so.
With regard to capital, I mean, we had our lot, we had what we thought was our final meeting this evening and approved, but we approved. I mean, if we had to go back, we'd have to. Yeah, we, we could, we could go back and we just run, we're running out of time. I mean, we've, we've approved, we've approved the, we've approved and gone through every requests and either approved or, and, and moved around and put it into the appropriate buckets. We did, we obviously don't have a request here, but that doesn't mean that one couldn't be submitted on short notice, but have to be followed by a quote.
Well, I think we still have the quote for the last.
Yeah, I have a quote, but it's probably a little outdated, but it would give you a ballpark.
And it ca- and it came off the state list, right? If I remember right.
By MHQ.
Yeah.
Best way to submit that would be to see, you know, you'd CC me and CC Ed. And then I'd have to schedule another meeting and I'd have to do this quickly.
So, Michael, you've been silent all night. Do you think we should go down this road, do this exercise? Put the strain on central office tomorrow to try and make this happen or no? I don't know.
Oh, I think, you know, Nancy and Bobby and I could take a look at it tomorrow. You, you, there's, I don't know if leasing would be a way to stick our foot in the water with this versus a purchase. You'd also need a driver. We don't, you know, we clearly need to look at where these four students geographically go, the chances of them being able to share a bus might be slim.
That's an interesting point there, like in terms of pickup and drop off, like if they're, if they're not going to the same location, you'll never get them dropped off at the same time. Is that what you're worried about?
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, maybe only two out of the four.
Could, yeah, that could be a stretch too, but we, I think, you know, I, I think we could take a, spend some time on that tomorrow, a little bit.
I mean, a lease, then you could operationalize it, could you not? Or do you have to, or does a lease have to be a capital item?
That's a Bobby question.
Like, can you operate, rationalize the monthly payment on a lease?
Yeah, you could.
Good.
And.
Would have to be a twelve month lease though, right?
No, no, just, well, typically what is offered in this would be a three year lease. And then after that three year lease, you own the van. So it's not like your typical lease that you would do as a personal.
Sure. Well, that's even better, honestly. I mean, are, but are you able to operationalize that? And capitalize, I mean, and not have to go out of pocket capital.
Yeah, but Matt, isn't that putting more money into our operational budget that we're trying to reduce?
Well, you know, because you reduce this line by an unbelievable amount presumably.
We'd be reducing transportation, which is outside of our primary operation. It would be benefiting the town's piece of their budget. So we could see it here. You can cut, you can cut, because this is below the line. This hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, potentially you could, you could cut that in, I'm making this up. You could cut that in half. Right? Down, get it down to eighty thousand if you gave us a lease at fifteen thousand dollars a year on the capital, because this is in your budget number that we can't control.
Well, okay, then we would, then I, then that's fine. So then, yes, so then, I mean, we could do that. Right?
Yeah. If this is the line we're reducing, we don't want to throw the number up here, which is just going to drive up this.
I got you.
So I guess if you guys could go through that exercise and then in addition to Ed and, and Matt, if you could copy Tom, or I'm sorry, Ken and myself, just so we can see what the final product is and then we can share it with our committees respectfully.
Okay.
Do we want to, do we want to cut out the technology? Or I mean.
That's what I was wondering.
I leave it up to, I leave it up to Elisa, you know, to make the determination. I mean, I just wanted to make sure we all understand what the consequences are, but. And I don't think she's with us anymore, is she? Although there you are, I missed you for a second.
Wasn't one of them a new program? Not necessarily the fiber optics or no?
I mean, I don't know how we cut technology at this point. And I would like to know from Kim, you know, how much bandwidth are we using? Answer those questions before we make any cuts.
I mean, if you're pretty close to what their ratio is, you know, level that you're going to go to now with what you're doing, there's no harm in decreasing the, you know, bandwidth you have whatsoever. So that's why I think we just need to get a number from her so that we can actually have that.
Well, what if we don't add the new items under the technology line items that are listed here?
That's what I meant, the new things, not necessarily the bandwidth.
That's what I meant, the new things, not necessarily the bandwidth.
The things that we don't even have right now, that's the technology support and the half FTE.
Yeah. So that would be the the ninth and the fourth you're talking about?
Yeah, nice.
Yep.
So that would be like, what, forty something, forty-one? Ish? It's a sizable chunk.
With that, at least we're not taking away something that we already have.
Yeah.
Right, so. I almost think, again, taking Allison's point there. Nine, seven. Six and four. We. We eliminate for right now. And if need be, either five or three, but if either one of those are eliminated. Then we we get our documents ready to, as soon as free cash is certified. We put the ask into the town to free up the the free couch for that, I mean. May or may not get it, we'll get along with everybody else, but. So I'm gonna make the motion that nine, seven, six. And four. Be cut from the budget. It's it's step one.
I'll second.
So for the record, that's the technology support increase from a point five to one point oh. It's an increase of the SLP from a point eight to a point nine. Additional special education teacher. Technology to support one-to-one on the computers.
So, discussion really quick?
Oh, yes, sorry, for discussion.
Um. So. Was the idea of the additional sped teacher to balance the caseloads? Or is there a specialized function that that person was?
Not to balance the caseloads, but to provide the support needed to students, so. For instance, at this point, we have a special ed teacher that services K one-two. One that services three and some of four, one that services some of four and five, and one of that services some of five and six. So, um, in order for all students to get what they need based on their IEPs. Um, it would be. You know, s- students who need Orton Gillingham would have this one sped teacher, not necessarily by grade level. So it is a little bit of balancing the grades, but at the same time, it's. Um, differentiating the support for students, so those, because right now. If you have one teacher in, say, third grade, who has a bunch of students that need Orton Gillingham, she can only service. A small amount of students for so so much during her day, because those students may need an hour and a half to two hours worth of services. So then the the load goes to the other teachers, so now I need another special ed teacher in order to provide those services to those other kids. You know, we have these teachers who are specialized in really good stuff. Um, but not able to use their certifications to the fullest because they're, you know, going far and not deep.
Yeah. Is there? Um. Is there any possibility that we could find someone to do that at a point five? Or would that not happen?
I think that we could do that.
So can I propose an amendment to your motion, John?
Go for it.
Uh, so I would wanna change six. Cuz that was in your original motion, change six from a one to a point five. And cut three instead.
That looks good to me.
All right, so clarify. Uh, the amended motion is to. Remove the ninth. For. Uh, reduction of twenty-four thousand one seventy. Remove the seventh as stated for reduction of seven thousand two eighty-seven. Adjust the additional special ed teacher from a one point oh to a point five, which is half of that number, so thirty-five thousand five. Five hundred, okay. Eliminate the technol- number four, technology is supported one-to-one computer, seventeen thousand two fifty-six. And eliminate the additional point five adjustment counselor, thirty-seven thousand one sixty-three. Any other discussion on that, those pieces?
Where does that bring us down to for percentage? Have you? Has anyone done math?
I don't do math on principle.
Having a hard time of doing math after eight PM.
Does my school cut the interventionist, that's why. Never learnt.
You you already voted number eight, right?
Yeah. That brings us in at about a ten percent increase, ten point one two percent increase. Over our four point nine over.
So it's once, did it, one sixty-eight, eight sixty-four? Do that again.
Yeah, one six, I have one sixty-eight, eight sixty-three, yes.
And you said that makes it what? Ten percent?
Yeah, if I take the one sixty-eight, eight sixty-three and reduce it by the six six six, the difference. That gets us to where ten percent, ten point one two percent over the four point nine.
And again, we're still pu- they're playing with the six 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 as opposed to seven, seven, or. I was ten, ten point one two. John, historically. When you've gone through this in the past couple of years, is this a number that you have regularly looked at? Or have they've been higher or lower than that?
Yeah, we haven't been in the double digits, and the the truth is, what's driving the double digits is the uh. The adjustments to the wages that happened two years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Uh, but before, uh, just before I lose it for procedural, there's no other discussion, can we get the roll call? On motion, Greg?
Ben and I.
Allison.
Sorry, right on, I.
Oh, sure, I.
Awesome.
Roger's eye.
And lower eye.
So n- now we're left with one, two. Five and half of six, right?
Yes, and leaving everything below.
Yeah.
My only, what, where was it? Is. The only question down below that I have, that's for Elisa, is. Can you tell me what the difference, knowing that we've already eliminated the pay for professional development? Can you tell me what the difference between thirty thousand for curriculum supplies and forty thousand? What that extra ten thousand dollars is going to do? Potentially do. Uh, do we need to keep it in there, but? You have a plan for that money?
So, that, am I correct, Elisa, that that curriculum line is actually for? Um. Your grade level. Materials, and I think you were getting an. Package?
Yes, but the money is in the budget this year for that. Package.
Oh, okay, that was FY twenty-one, okay.
Yep.
So this will be the.
And I, the school committee had wanted, and I appreciate your support, to keep it at forty thousand. Um, going forward, because we haven't had that level of funding. And each year, at the end of the year, if there were lines that were unspent, we were purchasing curriculum items for the following year with that money. So instead of doing that practice, continuing with that practice, we were going to get what we needed each year in the budget. So going from forty to thirty, I think we could probably go down another ten. And and so get, because of some of the grants that we're getting. This year, we can use that money for some of these curriculum items that we need. Of course, I hate to say that, because it will never go up, but if we have to cut, we have to cut, you know, it's gotta come from somewhere, so.
Right, and I also think, I also think in this particular line, this was something that school committee wanted, right? You you originally had come in at the thirty, we wanted to push it up to forty, so that we can start getting ahead of this curve. So given the totality of the circumstances that we're under here, and I know it's only a token ten thousand dollars, but. I would like to move that back to the original thirty thousand dollar request, which is the same as this year. So.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Okay, motion made by Umbra and seconded by, uh, Tasha. Discussion on that piece? Roll call, Greg?
Ben and I.
Allison?
Right on, I.
Liam?
I'm sure I.
Uh, awesome.
Roger's eye.
Your lumber, I. Anywhere else? I do think our utility bill has to come down at some point, I just don't know when it's gonna hit up.
We can't count on that, though.
I know.
So.
So I guess I I need to, I need to understand procedurally what our next steps are. On the town, cuz originally I had, I, maybe I was naive, but I thought we're gonna get to a final numbers. But given that we've given the central office homework to do about this bus. Digital students, that's not gonna happen tomorrow. So like, we're supposed to meet tomorrow night, they have a tentative meeting, I think, for Thursday.
We have the FY twenty-two budget on the, on your, on your regular agenda for Wednesday night.
Correct, well, that's true.
But what's the hard deadline?
April first.
April. So. So that April first deadline was a little soft this year, but what's our like? Deadline.
It's like the absolute deadlines, April four, I think.
Be May fourth.
Could it be?
May fourth, sorry.
So, like.
So I I think internally as a committee, we we should try, we we need to. You know, one way or another finalize this Wednesday evening.
So how much did we cut already?
Uh, one sixty-eight plus that ten gets us to one hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
And we were trying to cut. Six hundred and something?
Yes, correct.
Six fifty, six sixty.
So potentially, if we if we can get this bus to work, that's potentially another hundred thousand, then.
Well, is it, is it though, because? Like I say, they they under budgeted already by a hundred thousand according to the document. So. That's, that's a question I have for the town, I guess. So, looking at their document for um, local school transportation, which would include a regular transportation and the special ed transportation. And they put a number in there as three hundred and eleven, seven twenty-five. And ours is four eleven eight eighty-seven, so that's already. A hundred thousand less than what we have, so is the, I'm not sure that's even gonna be a help. But I don't know where the town is in their numbers, so, kinda.
I think the only other exercise that I'd be looking for Wednesday night, I guess this would be a collaboration from. Administration. As a whole is. We know what our maximum class capacities are by contract, we know what we are currently doing. Where does administration feel comfortable with the class sizes, what's that number? Brief explanation as to it, and then apply the formula. And. The only other place to go in in this budget staffing, I'm not. Encouraging them, I'm just saying, we need the data points. For Wednesday night, if administration comes back and says we need to maintain no more than fourteen children per classroom because it's six foot. That's fine, that's that's your position. Um, but if we apply that mathematic equation based on our enrollments, that means we need X number of classrooms. Do we have them? And then, uh, how many teachers do we need adding in? The specials and all that stuff, here's our number, and it may very well be the seventy-five number we're setting up. That's it, I don't know, but without going through the exercise. We can't defend ourselves by saying that we're, we don't have any. Extra positions. To meet the minimum threshold, does that make sense?
Yeah. I mean, it really looks like. Maybe fifth grade would is is a place, if you want class size of twenty-five, but we could, we could go through the whole uh. The whole scenario closely, more closely, and think about the co- the COVID implications, the distancing implications, yeah.
Right.
John, are you asking for the number to keep the kids at four feet?
I'm, I'm saying. What do we know? We know what we're contract, contractually obligated not to exceed, that's our ceiling. We know what we're comfortable with right now, which is what we're doing. Adjust that based on anticipated enrollments coming in, right, cuz first grade might go up or whatever the case may be. Memory serves me, we have twenty-six classrooms, maybe. You know, can can we do it with twenty-six? I mean, doing it at the number we're comfortable with, maybe we need twenty-eight classrooms, and we have a whole separate problem. I don't think so, cuz we would have heard that. But. Those are the facts that we know, and administration. Well, they're on the ground, they're like, well, we can do fourteen, but you know, we're okay with fifteen. And here's why, okay, fine, we all hear it, we agree to it, that's it, do the calculation. You know, every classroom needs a a te- a primary teacher assigned to it. So many specials to honor the breaks and all that within the agreement, what does that come out to? Hypothetically, it comes out to seventy. And we have seventy-five staff positions. It it. You know, it's just a matter of numbers at that point, but. It it may all work itself out, so it's dependable, so if we go to the floor at the town meeting. We can defend ourselves and say, we, you know. We can defend ourselves and say, we, you know. The other way to do this is, is to cut the staff and here's what's gonna happen, but we'll know it now. Right now, I don't feel confident being able to speak to it particularly.
I, I guess the, the only difference I was making is. The pandemic isn't over, so I wanna know that we can. Like if we, if we cut those positions. Such that we can't, and I'm not saying we are, so that everyone listening is, I'm not considering that necessarily. Um, but if we were to do that and we turn them back into sardine classrooms. And it turns out while COVID had a fourth surge or whatever. Then where are we gonna get those extra teachers from? Right? So are we gonna shoot ourselves in the foot because, and then we're, we're dealing with a drained. You know, mostly drained school choice account, so we don't have some of the. Some of the safety nets that we had the last round. We use those to get to where we are. So I'd like to know what the four foot. Number is for teachers as well, if that's different from the number that John suggested.
Yeah, no, and to be clear, I'm just saying, contractually, we can go up to twenty, an average of twenty-four. We've all been comfortable at fourteen per classroom. My guess is that's our number, but that's our spam. Where we need to be, we need to, and then. Yeah, we just need to get the data points out on paper. Anything else for tonight?
Is, uh, I guess the question for the finance committee is there, uh. A number that we could get to where you would put that little recommend label on our section? And it's, so what is that number?
But honestly, I don't know at this point.
With a pretty please on it?
Yeah.
I have. I really don't. I really don't have any idea at this point. I mean, because we've got. We've got to meet on what's transpired here. Um, we obviously haven't had. Uh, a group meeting and we need to do that, and then we've got to find out. Um, you know what the feedback is tomorrow night before, you know, we can ultimately take a position, I think. But, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate what you, you know, what you folks have. Uh, you know, been able to come up with tonight, and I know you've got a couple of other steps that you've got to go through, but, um. I appreciate your efforts.
And just for process, Wednesday night's a regular. School committee meeting that already has the, the budgets on it, so because it's a regular meeting, um. Well, I don't know. How many, how many members are on the finance committee?
Five, four. This four and a liaison.
Well, if, if circumvent, circumstances happen to prevail themselves, uh. I don't think we'd get any trouble. If, if you wanted to attend, Ken, and be heard on that piece or relay, we could rec, we could recognize you. I don't, I don't know that we'd be able to recognize the whole committee without posting it.
Right.
Recognizing individual to speak.
So. So the logistics for your approval process is?
We, it, it's just a vote. As soon as we can get three members to vote to approve a budget, then that, that would be the budget that went to the town.
So the, okay, so the committee. That's here tonight is ultimately gonna be voting on Wednesday to formalize this.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would say yes, if we're gonna formulate it. All the cuts that were voted on tonight would be in there, so. I guess that, that's now the high watermark. Right, and we'll see Wednesday night if we can find additional things.
All right, then, um. Then I guess the other, the only other alternative or the only other. Issue will be if we, you know, come back from the select board and, you know, the number becomes. If, if, if now it's at ten and we come back at six. And where we go from there? And, and, and again, we've got May four lurking in the. Wings.
Well. My understanding, but I've been known to be incorrect in the past, is that. Ultimate, ultimately, we, we pass a budget. Say it's at ten and you guys in the town needs us to be at six. It comes in. Finance and select word vote not to. And the vote, and the voters of the town. Have to first vote on our budget, and if they follow your recommendation, they vote down our budget. Then finance and select order are able to put up their own budget, which would just be a line item number. And then with that pass, we'd have to come back and figure out a way to make that number work, because that's all we're gonna be here.
Yeah, that's procedurally how it works. You've got the process.
But I plan on being a spectator tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
I said, I plan on being a spectator, it's like words, rather than listen and see.
Okay.
Direction or feedback for Wednesday night.
Yep. All right, and. Is there, is there a way that you could rerun these numbers based on what you have finally?
Yes.
Initially approved tonight?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share my notes with Bobby to make sure that we both record the same way. She has the master agreement for the master document.
All right, so we would be, we would be able to present them to, uh, select board tomorrow.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Tammy, do you have a point of order question?
Um. Tammy Valunas to ninety-eight College Highway, Hampshire Regional School Committee. I would definitely make sure that the townspeople know that you were asked to try to cut. Six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Is normally they've come back and asked you to cut forty thousand, sixty thousand. Six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, you're being asked to cut. That, that, that's crazy. So please make sure that. When you are having your budgets talked about with the townspeople or wherever. Make sure that people understand that you have had to cut a lot. Of money. That's the only thing I can say.
Tammy, have you been, have you been, uh, present at the entire meeting?
Yes, I have.
Tammy, for, just to say this about Tam, Tammy's been present at nearly every meeting for at least the last three years. She.
Longer than that.
Yeah. That's as long as I've been paying attention, so much longer than that, I'm sure.
School committee meetings.
So she's at every select board meeting.
Okay.
She's at every school committee.
I, I, it's crazy, the, the number of meetings, but I do it because I want to be informed. I want to know.
Right.
What is happening, and what kills me is that you'll be on a select board meeting. And they will be saying how, um. They need more business. They don't wanna bring on more bedroom community because we don't have the services to support it. And then you go to a planning board meeting where they have the opportunity to bring businesses into town. And they vote it down because they would rather have business of bedroom communities come in, cause that's easier to service. It's like the two are fighting against each other and it, it, we're not getting anywhere. If we have the opportunity to bring in revenue, a, a restaurant, so then you have real estate revenue. And meal tax revenue. I don't know, it's just, it's frustrating to see what's happening.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's why I asked the question of whether in, in the past couple of years, you know, have, what have the numbers looked like?
I have never seen them have to cut six hundred thousand dollars ever.
Right.
Ever, and, and, and you can see that the, Elisa has the work. You know, she's, she's put in the numbers and the contracts. That's what, that's what messed us up. Even at Hampshire region, those contracts that had to be negotiated and, and, and the steps. Because we had so many teachers that hit that last step and they don't get a pay raise o, other than cola. They, they work their magic and they're lawyers and next thing you know, you've added three, four steps. Which is an extra six, seven, eight thousand dollars per step.
Right.
Sorry.
You know, but you get a whole, you have a note, you know, a whole other situation. With other employees within the town who have dot had raises for a couple of years, so.
Yeah.
You know, so it's damned if you do, damned if you don't.
And, and the other thing is that nobody really looks at, we have lost a lot of employees. Because.
Yep.
They are not getting paid what they can make at other places.
Right.
Doing the same amount of work. And, um, cause our scale is off and that's, that's something that we, we have to look at also.
Thank you, Tammy, and I think wasn't when we decided what would be level funding, meaning level staffing funding, it would be an eleven percent increase. So now we're bringing it below that level staffing funding number, which is like really sad, I think. Right now, because we need it, we need it more now than we did before because of what's happened.
I did really like Austin's idea of having parents or have, having. Your insurance, since everybody has to pay for insurance already, have the insurance bring in. The counselors to talk to the kids and the, and the families, but. But that, that's my two cents. Sorry.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if there's nothing else, it's six after nine. Everybody has their homework for the next forty-eight hours.
And I, I can't be at Wednesday's meeting because I have a, I have a wake back to attend in Eastern Raths, so I'll be missing that unfortunately. But I think you'll have a quorum.
I was gonna say, that means the rest of you have to show up.
I told you, maybe a few minutes late coming back from the lawyers, so.
All right, uh, the time is nine oh seven. Entertain a motion to adjourn the joint session.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second.
Without discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
And like, likewise entertain a motion from the, uh, finance committee to do the same.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Can I hear you, Mary?
A second, I'll second.
Barbara, okay. All right, and all in favor?
Barbara, I.
Rachel, I.
I still can't hear Mary.
Mary's muted.
Oh, she's muted. Cole, I, thank you. Thank you, folks, again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, I'm sure we.